I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on the Florida School Committee for September 8th, 2025. Deb, would you please call the hall?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah.
Mayor Coogee?
Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. We have no recognition awards tonight and no student comment yet, but we do have a citizen's input, item number five, Nelson Vasquez, Sunset Hill. Deb, could you please read the letter?
Dear School Committee members, the time for action has arrived to better safeguard everyone that works in our district. Adopting an official policy that is committed to maintaining a safe, respectful, and professional environment for all staff members is imperative. To ensure this, we must enforce a zero tolerance policy regarding any form of harassment, intimidation, threats, or violence directed towards teachers, administrators, or support staff. Anyone that is accused of verbal abuse, physical aggression, or disruptive behavior towards staff will result in immediate disciplinary action. An independent investigation will then take place while the individual accused of wrongdoing is placed on administrative leave without pay. If the accusations turn out to be true, their employment is immediately terminated. On the other hand, if those same accusations turn out to be false, they will receive their back pay and proceed working here. This policy is not intended to limit communication or constructive feedback, but to safeguard the well-being of those who dedicate themselves to educating and supporting students. A secure and respectful environment is essential for effective teaching, learning, and the overall success of the school community. Nobody should have any feeling of fear working here, and this policy aims to achieve that goal.
Thank you. Subcommittee updates, we have one.
Deb's gonna have to read it because it's not coming up. Deb, would you mind?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's Ms. Larrabee's instructional subcommittee. Deb will read it because she can't get it on her computer. Go ahead, Deb.
Instructional subcommittee took place on August 13th, 2025. The administration gave us an update on DESI guidance and updates related to competency determination. We discussed the UAspire program for our high school students. UAspire provides financial aid information and resources to our unserved population to help them find affordable ways to enter into post-secondary education. These services are available in person and virtually. Florida Republic Schools and UAspire have been collaborating since 2014. The committee voted to refer the UAspire agreement to the full committee. There was a discussion on services provided by the One Goal Program at Durfee High School. One Goal is a three-year program starting in the 11th grade and through their post-secondary education. 11th grade is the define-me phase where students explore their educational and personal identities. Senior year students weigh their school aspirations, personal values, and post-secondary options and start the enrollment process. Year three, students attend summer support sessions, stop their college classes, and consistently meet with One Goal representatives to review both academic and financial goals. In the 2024-2025 school year, there were 121 11th grade students, 103 seniors, and 84 graduates in their first year of college. The committee voted to refer to the full committee. The committee voted to refer the visual pathway specialist job description to the full committee. The committee voted to refer the Stone School and RPA program of studies as well. The meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Item number six is the superintendent's report. Dr. Curly.
Good evening. I just want to report in terms of our school opening that thanks to the preparedness of teams across the district, the opening of schools went very smoothly this year. So lots of people to thank in terms of, you know, school-based staff as well as district planning teams. Every one of our schools has had multiple visits from central office team this year, and the general consensus from our team and from school leaders and talking to teachers is that things are going really well. Teaching and learning is happening in our classrooms across the district. I was just in a school today where they were already doing learning walks using a rubric that we're using across the district and already collecting some data there, doing observations in classrooms. So that was really, that was really great to see this early in the year. As of today, we have an in our seats enrollment of just over 11,100 students. So that represents the number of our students who are coming into the district and, you know, are in our seats in school buildings on a daily basis. It's a number that looks very similar to where we were at this time last year, our October 1 number. Last year was 11,089, so very similar to where we are now. So now that students are, student enrollment is slowing down and we have, we see that, you know, PACE isn't as busy now that kindergarten is starting up, we're going to be moving forward with some plans for redistricting for next school year, and we'll look to keep the community informed as we do that throughout the process. Another big to-do in terms of school opening are the yonder pouches. As everybody knows, we implemented a new cellphone-free policy at the start of last school year in our, at the secondary grades, grades six through 12. Policy included the use of yonder pouches at the secondary level. And so as of Friday, the, our three traditional middle schools as well as two K to eight schools have gotten yonder pouches up and running in their building. At Durfee, they're following policy and expectations in terms of being cellphone-free while they prepare for their launch later this week. Another, something new for school opening this year is Project Present. And so, so for the first time that I know of, and I'm pretty sure it's really the first time in the district, we're moving to an attendance system at Durfee and our three traditional middle schools that will require students to scan in Present as they enter the building each day. So using the new system, all students at these schools will be marked absent to start the day, and they'll remain marked absent until they scan into the building either on time or tardy. So they'll be present or tardy on our records depending on the time of entry. We're expecting the system to streamline attendance-taking, so it's actually happening before students show up at their first period class. It leaves less room for human error and is going to coincide with school's requirements for students to have their IDs on them so that they can use them for lunch every day. So we'll be tightening up in that area as well. I wanted to give a transportation/traffic update. One of, one element is that we are adding some crossing guards. We've gotten some feedback for two schools in particular being Durfee and Viveris. And so it does look like that will, we're going to be adding some, some crossing guards that should be in place within the next week. So that was really great to get that news today. Wanted to mention that following some road construction out on Eastern Ave, new crosswalks are getting painted for Watson, and those will, they should be done by the end of this week. And then in terms of some traffic at Durfee, we have been able to enlist the support of SROs at Durfee. They are assisting with traffic in the morning, so outside of any emergency situation that would take them away from the school, we're expecting that our SROs there will be able to help us out on Elsbury Street in the morning. I also just want to mention that, you know, one of the things that we saw at Durfee that kind of was concerning was that we understand that there has been traffic outside of Durfee, you know, especially in the first week of school. A lot of people who are kind of new to the system, seeing a lot of traffic outside the school and, you know, stopped traffic going north on Elsbury Street toward Bristol Community College. We were seeing large numbers of students who were getting out of their parents' cars across the street and then kind of darting through traffic, you know, generally stopped cars, but cars that could move at any moment to make their way across the street on Elsbury Street. And so we're just asking parents who are doing the drop-off that if they could be patient, turn into the parking lot to drop off students and not drop them off across the street, that would be very helpful to us in maintaining safety outside the building. And I would say that, you know, to be true at, you know, schools across the district, it was just something that was witnessed, you know, I got to see up at Durfee. Next piece is Pace on the Go. As people know, last week we unveiled the new Pace on the Go RV. That was generally donated by South Coast. Our community members can expect to see the RV out and about hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We have to get some remaining systems up and running, maybe battery, not sure the AC is going to be working in the RV when we first get up and running, but don't really want something like that to hold us back from getting out. So moving forward, the community can expect to see an event calendar, identifying where the Pace on the Go RV will be on a particular day, and so that, that RV can make some stops and connect people with school and community resources. So just want folks to be on the lookout for that. Also, just want to provide a hiring update. We've onboarded 55 new staff members since our last meeting in late August, including 27 teachers and four paraprofessionals. We've also added, you know, three instructional support liaisons, two coach interventionists, two speech-language pathologists, and, and other positions as well. We've had 12 rehires during that time, which again, I always think is exciting when people leave us and they do come back. 14 transfers within the district as well as 30 resignations. So as of today, we do still have numerous openings in the district, nearly 50 of which are actually teaching positions that we obviously want to fill. About half of those openings are in high-need areas like special education and ESL. And just want to let people know that we are partnering with staffing agencies to fill these positions while we continue to recruit and hire, and we're looking at any time for any of our staff members to continue recruiting their friends and neighbors and family members into the district because we've had a lot of that this year. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Larrabee.
Thank you, sir. Just a question on Pace on the Go. Whose responsibility is it to drive it? Who's driving this vehicle? Is that a position that we're going to need?
So I think that what we would look to do initially, I don't know that we'd have like, we're not going to hire a full-time driver or anything like that, but we would need somebody with, you know, a special license to do that.
That was my next question. Is it a CDL?
I believe so. And so we would need someone to be able to do that. And so we have, we do have some people on our staff who have kind of raised their hands to say, I'd love to do it. But we will have to compensate somebody with that license to do some of the driving.
Right. I mean, I understand, you just said there's people interested. So would that require a transfer out of a, a certain position because they already have their own responsibilities? How would they?
Yeah, I think that we would have to, I think when, if we were paying an existing staff member, it would have to be for work, obviously, outside
Okay.
the, outside the school day, and we do expect to do some things, you know, after-hours and on weekends. But outside of that, I think we would have to look at some kind of part-time opportunity, kind of, as needed, not someone who's going to, you know, drive every Tuesday from nine to 12.
I think there's plenty of bus drivers that would do that
Right.
after they make their morning and afternoon run. Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I agree with the vice chair comments as well. I mean, we could, in the chair's comments, or we could also maybe even consider, that's something we could contract with. I know we're going to have a lot of contracts on the agenda today for staffing agencies. I think that's a one position where we could save money, or we could go to an outside company as well. But if there's some, someone in-house or with a transportation company, that's a good idea, too. I'm gonna start, I have a few different questions and comments. Trying to think which one I'm going to start from. I'm gonna start with traffic. So watching a Florida City Council Subcommittee meeting, I've learned that there will also be a crossing guard supervisor position that will be placed with inside Rock Street. Who's in charge? Is that, how's that gonna work? Is that through the city or is that through us?
The person will be hired through the city. Mr. Pacheco.
So it is a city, a city position, the money's city, money that's paying for along with all of the crossing guards. The person hired will be working out of Rock Street, maybe an hour a day. Most of the time, we'll be going school to school, checking on the crossing guards, and meeting with principals for their needs.
So who would that person, I guess, report to? Are they gonna report, if they're gonna be stationed inside Rock Street, and that's the information I received from a city council meeting, I didn't receive it from
That's true. That's true. They'll be working out of transportation. They won't, they won't answer to transportation. They will still answer to City Hall. They will be working for the traffic department in City Hall.
Okay.
It's just a lot easier to
Collaborate.
to be at transportation with our people than it is at City Hall working away from the situation.
And I guess, because actually this was also brought up at that meeting as well. Yeah, I think it's something that I'm open to listening more about. Is there any appetite to move the crossing guard positions within security?
Absolutely not. I'm, I'm saying that from me, my standpoint. We, I don't need one more person to, to watch over. I think that the system itself is fine. I, I think that having someone that's in a position that all they're worrying about is crossing guards is very good. I think that the traffic department is busy enough doing the regular day-to-day work, and having someone just worrying about the, the guards at the schools, the crossing guards is a nice way of handling it.
Okay. While you're up here, Mr. Pacheco, I'm gonna also bring up Pace on the Go.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure we're not running into any issues where I know, because I know some of the, correct me if I'm wrong, some of the repairs for the Pace on the Go vehicle came through grant funding?
It did.
And are we gonna run into any issue like with the repairs that still have to be done with the AC or whatever? Where's that gonna come out of?
So I'm not quite sure where those funds are coming out of yet. We haven't determined a vendor as of yet and how much work needs to be done. The vehicle is operational. The air conditioning may or may not be a problem, depending on how quickly we get it out into the community. So there are some systems in the, in the unit that we would like checked out, but we, we don't believe that that, the air conditioning piece should be a holdup as far as getting it out the door.
So, okay, with that being said, so there's no issue if this Pace on the Go up and running went tomorrow, this could go out tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. So I have other questions, and I'm gonna go with school opening. It's no secret that we have a major class size issue in this district, and I think there's a lot of different culprits, but I think one culprit is, is the fact that we as a district not yet have a full and oper, operational strategic plan that can address some of the issues there. I've heard from many parents over the last few weeks that have, you know, and not, not to anyone's fault, but have been denied transfers or, or being displaced. And I think it's worth having the conversation as, in terms of space within our buildings. So actually, Mr. Pacheco, I'm sorry, actually I have one more question in terms of space for, for the buildings. So Bishop Connolly, I know we rent out the first floor.
Yes.
We, we are in charge of maintaining the entire property.
Yes.
The second floor. I, I went to Bishop Connolly, so I know there's a few classrooms up there. That's not within our lease.
It is not.
Have we inquired to how much extra or how much additional cost that will be?
We have not. It, I'm gonna say that moving into Bishop Connolly was a major task for us. It wasn't, you know, just walk in and, and take over the place. The, the building is in tremendously, surprisingly good shape overall. We've had worse situations. So I, I believe that the building is, is, is very good for what we're using it for right now, but to have at this time of, you know, school already started, to go into that building and try and make it school-ready, that's, that's not an easy task to expand up to the second floor. And to be totally honest, I'm not quite sure what we would house up on the second floor. It is a, it is a school that is, for instance, we have two elementary schools right around it. So as far as using it for that kind of purpose, I'm not sure what we would do with it. And we are limited what we can do upstairs. It's, it's a small amount of classrooms. And again, I don't believe it's a quick fix for anything we'd want to do right now. I'm not saying it's impossible. All I'm saying is, is it's not a quick move in and we're ready to go.
I, I think there's some ideas to that. We have administrative positions that, you know, are housed throughout various classroom buildings, RPA being one, that could potentially, you know, we could free up a classroom space there. If we move them there, there's a dual language program that we could take a look at. Same, same line of questioning with the old stone. Is that, what would be the, to get that up and running?
So old, the old stone school on, on Globe Street and the Wiley School.
Just to clarify the one, yes, that one, yeah.
Yeah. And the Wiley School that we turned in, you know, turned over to the city. Both of those schools, for us to reopen those schools, it's a major renovation. So they need to be brought up to standards. They've been shuttered for a certain amount of time. So they would require, require elevators, fire suppression, major renovations. So to, to do that in a school that, and both of those are small unit schools, maybe 10 rooms or less, is a problem. It's a major expense on the district to do that for such a small amount of students.
Did I hear you correctly say that we, we turned over the old stone to the city?
No, no, no. I meant the Wiley.
The Wiley, okay.
The Wiley, yes, not the stone. Stone is still currently in our jurisdiction.
Right. And, and I agree with you. That's not something that obviously we can afford as a district, and I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but I think it's just worth throwing it out there just, just to find out if there is anything that we can do to get some additional space. Because again, I, obviously the classroom sizes are through the roof more than what we would want them to be. And, and I, just, again, I feel for parents who are getting either moved around or for parents that are getting denied a reasonable transfer. So I think something needs to be done. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Superintendent, on the dual-language program, is this something that could be, I know we thought, had a little bit of a conversation. I don't know if you've thought about it anymore. If this is something that could be moved out of Viveris?
During this school year? I, I, so I think the thing to understand is that, so we do have open, we do have open space at schools. We, we added classrooms at both Fonsica and Laterno, and we have some grade levels at Laterno in particular with very low class sizes. So as, as new people come into the district, it is a school to which we provide transportation and, and students will, will be enrolled there, kind of regardless of, in some cases, regardless of where they live, they'll go to Laterno. Any change we make now, if we opened a, a new school right now on the second floor of Connolly, or we moved a program out of a school, I'm, I'm not sure what we would gain if what we're trying to avoid is, you know, upsetting families and displacing students and the like. It's like, at this point in the year, yes, we had some parents over the summer who were not happy that their transfer requests were not honored. That is true. But we, we wouldn't be able to make that particular set of parents happy, per se, by moving a whole school worth of students out of, out of another building or, you know, from across buildings and trying to fill a school at the Connolly site or anywhere else. So we, unless there is some dramatic change to what enrollment looks like right now at multiple grade levels, we wouldn't move to do anything different in terms of the way grade levels and such are distributed across the district. We'd be looking to fill the classrooms that we have open.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Dias, because I'm here, moving the dual-language program is
Congratulations, by the way.
Oh, thanks. Is the equivalent of moving a two-unit school. So that would be the equivalent of like picking up Westall and moving it to another building. The dual-language program currently encompasses 10 classrooms. So it's not a matter of like, it's not a small program at this point. It's a relatively large program. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that it is 10 classrooms that we would need because we did look very, very closely at multiple points in the year and like considered where all of our programs needed to go. I don't want you to think we're not doing our due diligence, but it's a large program.
Sure. If I can just ask you one question then. What was the reason we didn't move it to Laterno?
There weren't enough classrooms. We needed 10. Like if we could have gotten eight, which kids were we gonna say, I'm sorry, you can't be in this program anymore? There weren't that many free classrooms.
All right. Just because I'm sure my colleagues, thank you for that. Just because I'm sure my colleagues have other questions. The last question I'll end with for now, I heard you, Superintendent, mention we're putting a yonder program within the middle school. I know the high school, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I know the high school program came before the committee for a vote. I really don't recall the middle school yonder.
They all came at the same time. We did this last year.
Right. I remember, but I remember there was specific guidance in terms for, for the high school program in terms of like getting suspended or like there was a tier system? Is it?
Everything was presented at the same time, grade six through 12. I think you might be recalling that potentially there was more, we got more parent feedback at the high school level than we did at middle school, but yonder rolled out and was approved by the committee last year.
I stand corrected. I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Just picking up on the underpouches. So, Madam Superintendent, you know I've asked questions on this since the start of the school year. I asked how the program was implemented and rollout for year two. We went back and forth on a couple of emails with you and your team. I still am not happy with how it was rolled out. I think we're in school now for eight days, seven or eight days, and no student at Durfee High School, from what I understand, has a yonder pouch at the present time. That is a very concerning thing for me. This committee, myself included, was very clear that we needed to support the administration at the high school and the middle schools for implementing this program. Once I started to ask questions, I was basically stonewalled to say, by you, Madam Superintendent, to say, let my team handle the day-to-day operations. I asked a few more questions and I received no answers. So the reason why I'm upset is because we got no answers on how this happened. So I asked for how many yonder pouches we purchased. I think we got some information in.
I sent you the invoices.
In the last, which I haven't got a chance to add them all up, but last year we made a, a pretty decent-sized investment in these pouches. Then in the, in the, one of the last build schedules come out that we ordered 1,000 new ones on our August 27th or 28th. And I'm saying to myself, how in the heck are we ordering 1,000 of these doc devices that should have been ready to go over the summer so that when school started, we could implement the program? I asked you and your team to say, when is it then were you thinking of rolling this out? And now if it's by the end of the week, that's going to be 12, 13 days where we have students that are not following school committee policy. We have a school and an administration that is not following school committee policy. And lo and behold, with all of that said, going back at least a week ago, probably a little bit more, we get an email from a parent upset today. Their parent is upset because their student is suspended for two days on an emergency removal, which is not, shouldn't be, because refusing to give your cellphone number is not a danger to the school and that's not subject to an emergency removal in my part. At the same time, as this parent indicated right in the email to Dr. Curly and the school committee, that if we had yonder pouches, my son has never been in trouble, he's a special education student, and he would have complied with the policy. So I'm upset because we are following policy when it's convenient and not when it's every, each and every time with consistency. Now, if they couldn't be there in the first day, I get it, but there had to be a system in place. And I said in the email, and I'll say it again, we are now, over the last week, have been scrambling, absolutely scrambling to try to get people to do the yonder pouches, whatever they have to do to them, organize them, put right numbers on them, and we weren't prepared. The administration dropped the ball on the yonder pouches year two. And I've been one that's been very supportive of this program right from the get-go. But it's frustrating to me that I ask questions, I get zero answers from you or your members of your team that I added. And the reason is because let your team do the work. Well, your team is doing the work and there's not one yonder pouch at Durfee High School. So now, next week or whenever this gets implemented, it's going to be like starting all over again for students, for staff to get used to the yonder pouches. This is something that shouldn't happen, and the email we got today is totally unacceptable on multiple levels. Why this is happening? It shouldn't be happening. So I'm very upset with that, and I wish it didn't happen, but I guess there's some, some, there must be some reason why we need 1,000 new ones. there's some, there must be some reason why we need 1,000 new ones. Maybe we didn't collect them, maybe we don't hold kids accountable to them, maybe we don't, whatever it is, something failed in this system, because we shouldn't need, after purchasing, I don't even know what it was, I think it was around $50,000 or $60,000, we just buy another $1,000 of them. Never mind what's in the other ones. It's unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. The, I had a question on, for the young lady for the dual language, if she could come back down, please? I'm not positive of the information, so you just said that there's 10 classrooms, like a two, equivalent of a two-unit. How many units are at Vavarris School other than your program?
That I don't know.
Does anybody know? Is it a five-unit school?
Two additional units and some special ed.
And that's one of the questions. The other one is, what are the class sizes in the dual language program for the 10 classrooms? Are they the same as the traditional?
So, we have made a full court press this year to recruit students. This is the first year that I've dedicated one staff member fully to doing that with a lot of support. And this year, our kindergarten ended up having a waiting list. So we were able to completely fulfill those K rooms. We also, for the years that we did not have people closely looking at dual language, and thank you to this committee for approving someone to help look at dual language, we did not have great enrollment, because there was not a dedicated person really looking at it. And we have since worked over the summer, we are constantly reaching out to families to fill out those classrooms. It is a myth that you cannot join a dual language program if you don't start in K. So as students leave the district, which we can't control, we are looking to continually recruit kids into the dual language program and actively fill all of those seats.
When you say full, kindergarten's full, what does that mean?
Full, same, they don't have, no, there's no cap, there's no cap that's any different than any other classroom. So it's not-
So it's 28?
Yeah, so whatever the contractual cap is for a classroom, it's the same contractual cap for dual.
So in first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, it's 28?
They don't, they're not all full at this point. K is full. Let me see if I can give you, I can get those to you.
Yeah, that's fine. Just, I'm just curious of two, I've said in the past that the program seems good, it just seems like an extra, and when it's taking two units out of the most highly populated area that we get calls from parents to say, "There's no room in Vavarris", it, I struggle with it, because that, those children are bussed into that school. Strategic long-term planning should have corrected this, that we don't have two units of dual language at the most highly populated person. And then everybody complains about transportation, but we're paying transportation twice, because we're paying for dual language to go there, and the school is full, so now we're paying for kids to go there across the city. So everyone complains about transportation and class size, but we've actually encouraged it, because keeping that program there, and I understand if you need 10 rooms and you only have eight, that's one thing, but when you have years and years of planning, we can figure out a place to put 10 classrooms.
So what I do want to say is, I was not the director at the time, but what I do know happened historically, is it was actually a pretty extensive conversation. As you know, our MLL population is relatively evenly divided between Spanish and Portuguese as our main languages. And so there were actually conversations about whether or not we would do dual language in Spanish, in Portuguese, and ultimately, I don't know how the conversations went, but Spanish was what was decided upon. I can tell you, last year's class at Vavarris did include a lot of Portuguese speakers, which are not, not that they can't be in dual language, but we are looking for students who are native English or native Spanish. And so sometimes it does happen. We can't predict exactly the language we're going to get from year to year, like who's going to move in and out of the district. So that has been a challenge for us too, that we are looking very closely at and that we do plan around. It's not that we're not looking at our numbers, it's just that the numbers of kids who enroll every year and what languages they speak can fluctuate year to year, but I know that a study was done when we first launched dual language by my predecessor, and Spanish was determined to be the language that was most needed and most supported by families. So that is why we went in that direction.
I understand. I think somebody was coming down to tell us the numbers of Vavarris.
So currently, in K, we have 50 dual, in dual classrooms. First grade, we have 40, 34 in second, 30 in third, and 37 in fourth.
So when, I know we just talked about numbers, and 50 divided by 2 is 25, but you said 28. Is what, is there, is there openings?
So it sounds like there are, since I last checked the list, that we could add six children, if we had six children. And I can look back at the list tonight and see if there are six more kids.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But, so there is opening for, I mean, the public listens to this, so there is openings for dual language K, could be because you're at 28. But I guess my concern is some of the other, I was trying to read quick, but one of them is 30?
Yeah, they are low. We know, we know this. So we added, we were told that, and it's true, first grade was, our K last year was very, very, very low. I believe we left kindergarten last year with fewer than 30 kids in the whole K program. So getting that up to 40 in first grade was actually a huge accomplishment to us. So we are working very diligently. And again, parents are listening, absolutely, we can still take kids into our dual language program. They do not have to be enrolled in first or second or even third grade. So if there are native speakers that want to join that program, they can join at any time. We are equipped for that.
Do you have the numbers for the rest of Vavarris?
I do.
Can you read those, please?
So for kindergarten, our average class size is 27.7, so almost at 28. First grade, we're at 28 across the board. Second grade, 26.3, so two of the classrooms have 26, one has 27. Third grade, 27, 27, and 28. Fourth grade, 29 across the board. And fifth grade, 26, 27, 27.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. I just raised those questions, because we definitely have an issue with the Vavarris School. The class size is not your, either one of your issues, per se, and I don't think we can change it much right now. Sort of is what it is. But moving forward, we have to do something different, because we shouldn't have, I can say it again, I don't think we should have two of the units blocked off for dual language where we bus children into a school. I just don't think it makes any sense at all. Thank you. The other question I had was, over the last 30 days of, I had mentioned about having three senior custodians, and I was told multiple times that they were going to be reduced down to two. Do you have any update on that? Because the last I recall in our email communication was that we were told they were going to go to two, and why is it not two?
So I don't think the words that it would be reduced to two, or it was ever used.
I was referring to Mr. Pacheco's comments in the public meeting.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I don't think that he talked about a reduction.
So, there are not two, there are not two seniors at any building. There are not two seniors at any building currently, right now.
So we had three seniors.
We have three seniors.
And we had two buildings.
And we had two buildings.
Because one-
Over the summer, over the summer, so that we could get that building ready. The first day of school, that senior was not there. That senior is working at other buildings. He's in a long-term sub-position right now for someone who's on FMLA for six weeks. There is no, there is no number of seniors in the district. When I came nine years ago, there were five senior floaters, because of closing buildings, moving people around. So there were five seniors extra. And every day, they would be given assignments, no matter where they were. We still currently have two, the MEO and truck driver position, and those two seniors work in buildings. So they're not in the senior ranks, so to speak. So this senior, this senior that was displaced, is currently working wherever I need a senior. They can work on vacation weeks, the seniors. Quite a few of our seniors, more than 50% of them, have more than four or five weeks vacation. So that number totals up. They can work in any building as a senior. There's no restrictions, other than they're replacing a senior in those buildings. And that's the plan moving forward, until we have an opening for that senior to move into.
Right, I guess that my, none of that is something that I don't understand. But we had seniors in this process that goes with when you appoint a senior or with the budget. I asked the superintendent, what position is this person filling? Like, we have two floaters seniors, or whatever, how many floater seniors do we have in the budget?
There are no floaters, so to speak, they're truck drivers slash MEOs. We have not increased the numbers of the custodians. Whether they're labeled seniors or juniors, the exact amount that we started the year with is what we have now. No positions were added.
Right, so there's no position that's called senior floater. But this person is now filling a role of a senior floater. And you don't have that authority to, and the superintendent doesn't have that authority, to just make a senior floater position outside the school committee and in the budget, which is what's happening.
It's not outside the budget. There are no dollars that weren't budgeted.
When there was three seniors at two schools, I was told by you in the public meeting, when the summer ends, we're going to reduce that down, under the process that a union would agree, or the union policy is, so that two would go. The top person seniority stays, the second seniority stays, the third seniority, the third lowest goes back to being a junior.
It's nothing to do with, it's nothing to do with seniority. It's due to location.
So you can just unilaterally put somebody wherever you want, and seniority has no bearing on it?
That's not what I said. I said seniority has nothing to do with those three positions.
I, well, I personally would beg to differ. If you had, if you had three-
That's the way it was negotiated, and that's the way the contract was signed. They are not-
Right, so we got snuckered by the contract, as I told the superintendent, the attorney, yourself, and anybody else that would listen during negotiations, that we inadvertently, without us knowing, without our permission, we created an extra senior position, is what we did. And we gave it to a person who was part of the negotiation team, because we cut a side deal. That's my statement, and that's what I feel is happening. At the end of the day, we shouldn't just have it, there's a process. If we needed a floater custodian, should come up before the budget, and everybody that's a senior should get a chance to apply for that position. But that's not the case. We're making a side agreement, put a senior in, which gets paid more, which is a budgetary issue, for all that, all that time. If a senior was out at a different school on a daily basis, I'm assuming that the junior's going to get a chance to fill that job-
On overtime, on overtime. So here I have a position that's already funded. I have a position, there is no overtime involved, so I can either pay people overtime, or I can use this position until the position fits itself.
But it shouldn't be, it's, I guess I'm trying to have a hard time knowing that, when we did the budget, we knew that there was no longer a third school.
That's not true. That's not true. We didn't know where it was going to land.
But we knew there was going to be two, instead of three. You've known that all summer, since before July 1, when the budget took over. We knew that all along, the whole school committee knew, that there was going to be three seniors for two buildings. That's not a secret. And the problem is, is that we didn't go back and look at the process to say, "How do we, you know, backfill these positions?" The person, like, it shouldn't be just, "Oh, we negotiated a side deal, and we, that's what we can do," or an MOA, whatever it is. It shouldn't be. It should be, was three, it goes down to two. When you need another one, which, it sounds like you're making the case for a floater custodian.
No, I'm not. I'm basically saying that this situation will fix itself. That's all I'm saying.
So, you know, the guy's basically doing a floater custodian, and if there's no custodian senior opening, what does the guy get paid? Over the next six months? And there's a day when you don't need a senior custodian, what does the guy get paid?
We're talking about a senior stipend, not a senior-
Okay.
So we're talking a couple of thousand dollars, is what I'm saying.
But he's getting paid more-
I understand that, Ms. Aguirre. I understand that.
And it's taking money out of the junior custodians. That's the problem that I have with this, is that this starts from when we were trying to negotiate, and then we made a deal, and then we signed this thing to say the X amount of seniors, but we weren't told that it was going to go from three to two, and then we were going to say, because if that was the case, when I asked the question in public meetings for the last two months, the answer would have been, what the guy's going to do is he's going to fill in as a senior, you know, until such time as it works itself out. That's not what I was told, and everybody can understand it. You said, point-blank, it was going to go from three to two. Superintendent, when I emailed her, didn't acknowledge the same. It just, it's frustrating that we go back and forth, and we just followed the process of how things go in the unions. I don't think we would have, you know, these disagreements.
Okay, let's go, Kevin, wrap it up, please.
My last comment is on the closed classrooms. I don't recall, and I apologize if I didn't see it, but last month I asked for a list of all of the closed classrooms. If that didn't go through, can we please get it reset? Because at the end of the day, we do have a class size crisis. Somehow, we negotiated back from 30 to 28 in contracts that the school committee didn't really know about, and now we're stuck against a cap, and there is no room in a lot of places, in too many places, and at some point, we've got to do something about it. With that, I yield.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
A few quick follow-up questions. One I forgot to mention on the traffic, obviously we-
I know. Is that on the agenda?
Transportation, traffic update, yes. So for that, so, obviously, we were just given a, sorry, keep on hearing rap, like some sort of rapping sound and giggling. So I've received, and the committee's received, plenty of complaints on traffic. We just received one from a parent regarding Vavarris. When we received complaints from parents relative to traffic, I was told, I wanted to have a subcommittee, a subcommittee meeting on the issue last year. I was told it's not within, so a few things, but, and I was told mainly it's not within the school committee's purview to discuss transportation and traffic issues. Yeah, it's on the agenda today, so I just want to make sure there are guidelines and just understanding, just want to make sure there's fairness in that. Just one quick comment question on, or just a request on what Mr. Aguirre was talking about. We can get the line item where the, those funds are coming out of for the paychecks or the stipend, just so we can have an understanding. That should be coming now as a specific line item out of the budget, so that should-
Which stipend?
He's talking about the three seniors. You want to know where they're located?
Yeah, that's just my, one request on that. So I'm just going to end on the yonder policy. So is Derfie High School the only school right now that doesn't have full yonder pouches?
I believe so. I believe the K to eights and the traditional middles have rolled out.
Okay, and I fully agree with Mr. Aguirre. If we're going to have a policy that's made by the school committee, it shouldn't, it should be fully followed, or there shouldn't be a policy. And again, we all received that email as well, and that shouldn't happen to any other student. And if we're not fully prepared to implement a policy, there shouldn't be a policy on the books, if we're not fully ready to implement it to 100%. So the school committee controls the policy. So I don't want to see a situation where, in the next week or two weeks while we're dealing with this, more kids are going to get in trouble for something, quite honestly, they shouldn't be getting in trouble for. So I'd like to make a motion, we suspend the yonder policy for three weeks until we get it straightened, straightened out.
I hear a second. Hearing none. Next item up on the agenda.
One more comment. Relative to the crossing guards, so, and this is relative to transportation and traffic. The crossing guards, they, I think it's a little weird, because they don't report to, we don't have any say, when we're told we don't have any say. But we, meaning us all, are in charge of making sure that the children are safe getting to and from school. We, as a school committee, receive zero, zero information from the crossing guard, or traffic department, slash crossing guard, whoever this person is now. We get no information whatsoever. So we are sitting back saying, when it's transportation, we got a transportation coordinator that handles transportation, and the city pays the bill. We have a crossing guard situation that we know nothing about. So if a constituent tells me we need a, we got a situation going on, other than, I guess just forward it to the superintendent, but you, based on what we're hearing here, especially from the mayor saying that it's really a city-side thing, you have no say. I think that's crazy.
I think no.
So whatever we have to do, we have to change the way that we do it, because we have to have a say in the crossing guards. For instance, we lost a young lady who worked at Derfie, and she used to be outside of Dunkin' Donuts every day. She did an awesome job. I went by there every day, or most days, to get a coffee, and she was there every day. Since she passed, we haven't had one person at that intersection the entire time, which is probably over a year now. And I don't understand when, when we don't have anybody, so what happens? Do they send a police officer? Do we send a security guard? Like, it just feels like there's a missing link, is all I'm asking for. I'm not looking for, you know, at some point, the superintendent of a school system needs to have a say in the crossing guards. And they're going to pay the bill by contract, by- And they're going to pay the bill by contract, by, you know, agreement, but I, I wish we could get one to say, where, where do we have, how many vacancies do we have? What? Because right now, the reason why I think it went to the city council, and they were asking for, which I think was a mistake, when they said the paro union was negotiating, I think that was the person speaking out of turn. But at the end of the day, it's a valid question. We have children going to school that should have a crossing guard, or a person helping, and we don't have any, and we in the school department have zero say. So whatever we can do to change that, I appreciate it.
I think, Mr. Aguirre, that's a partnership, and I think when that para discussion came up, it was an opportunity for a para that wanted to come in an hour earlier and work the shift. It wasn't anybody being forced, it was giving them a chance to earn some more money. Having a formal person, as the head of it now, is going to address the very things you're talking about, going school to school and seeing who's on what corner, what, when, and where. If not, it falls to the principal at a school that may have to say, where's my secure, where's my crossing guard? So we're tightening that up. It is a partnership. I'm confident that the, the person that's going to oversee it has a ton of experience in traffic and streets, and that'll, that'll work much better, and hopefully, I'm with you, we'll have a better handle on our kids passing.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes, item number seven.
Motion to approve all minutes.
I have a motion to approve all minutes.
Second.
I have a second. So this vote will be on 7:01. The regular school committing from 7:29, 7:02, the instructional subcommittee meeting from 8:13, and 7:03, the regular school committee for 8:18. I have a motion, a second. Discussion on the minutes. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item eight, number one, is travel requests. They're mostly all band-related.
Motion to approve.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second.
Just one question I want-
Do I have a question? Mr. Dias.
I saw the performing arts one, I just didn't see the one for, um, Durfee High School. What, what is this, um, could someone explain what it's for?
Which one?
The, uh, the, uh, Durfee High School, the, um, Tennessee. Um, just want to see what we're-
Cross town.
Oh, Janet?
Yeah, cross town.
It's to go to Memphis to visit a high school across town.
This is Evolve staff.
Okay, I was looking for the participant. I, I, I see it now. I yield, sorry.
I have a motion, a second, on the trips. Um, could, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I have a number of donations on the item number nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on the donations. Any questions on the donations?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias.
Just a quick question or comment request on the first one, um, for the summer enrichment. I've asked for many months in public meetings, in emails, for the line items for the Durfee summer program. I haven't received it.
It's a donation, okay.
I understand, but it's for the summer enrichment program.
I have a motion, a second, on the donations.
I wasn't done speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, my, a second.
So I, I will see what the issue is in providing it, so if it, the line items could just be provided, so we could see what we spent money on, that would be great. Thank you.
Specific to the Durfee summer enrichment program?
No, the whole, entire program, uh, oh, yes, this, yes, specific to that.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll on the donations, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The superintendent will acknowledge the donations.
On behalf of Durfee High School Principal, Dr. Jessica Stevens, the acknowledgement of a $5,000 donation from Baycos Bank. The donation was used for the Durfee Summer Enrichment Program. On behalf of the Parent and Community Engagement Center Director, Cindy Kudo, the, I'd like to acknowledge a $300 donation from Guardian Home Healthcare. The donation was used to supply refreshments at the ribbon-cutting events for Pace on the Go RV. On behalf of Watson Elementary School Principal, Karen Wood, I acknowledge the donation of 100 backpacks from Stonehill College. The donation will be used for students in the school who need a backpack. On behalf of Green Elementary School Principal, Dr. Liz Dunn, I acknowledge the receipt of 40 backpacks with assorted supplies, a donation from LSE Photography. The donation will be used to provide students in need with a backpack for the 25, 26 school year. On behalf of Green Elementary School Principal, Dr. Liz Dunn, I acknowledge the donation of home bags, which include school supplies for all students at Green, a donation from the United Methodist Church. The donation will provide school supplies for all students at the Green Elementary School. And on behalf of the Robert Almoderos Resiliency Preparatory Academy Principal, Dr. Stacy Monet, I acknowledge the donation of six cases of soup from Blount Fine Foods. The donation will be used for the appreciation, staff appreciation luncheon.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Very quick question.
Mr. Dias.
Um, just on the backpacks, I, because I know the district already has a, um, a plentiful, like, a, a good amount of backpacks to begin with, and we're, I, my understanding, we're usually stocked up on that. Do we ever run into the situation where we don't have enough backpacks? Do we ever get a surplus of backpacks from the donations? And if so, what would happen with them?
I think that generally speaking, we hold them for next year. I, I don't, we don't go necessarily, and I'm not sure what the alternative is, because there's going to be, if there's not a need right now, there's going to be. I think that at the start of the school year, lots of students do participate in other kind of backpack drives, um, coming out of, you know, coming out of the summer event. But the schools keep them on hand in the event that one is needed later in the year.
Right, I guess my idea, if I can just give a quick idea, is I would like to see if, um, obviously, there's going to be certain needs, like, in terms of backpack, like, certain school supplies, or supplies for educators, if we can maybe work with the nonprofits and work with those who might need it, so we can say, hey, this teacher needs this, this, and this, these teachers need this, this, and this for their classrooms, and maybe we have an excess of backpacks when the donations could, then maybe people would rather donate to something more. Not saying we don't need backpacks, but I think there needs to be, um, better logistics with it. I, that's my opinion.
So maybe, I think what you're suggesting is that we let people know that, like, we're all set with backpacks, could you donate other things? Is that what you're suggesting?
If that's the case, if that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number 10, approval of grants. Um, I know we do these in blocks, so the first one-
There's just one.
Who?
There's only one.
There's just one.
Just one big block.
Okay, I'm sorry. One big block, my fault. I'm looking at contracts. McKinney Vinto?
Motion to approve with a question.
I have a, a motion on McKinney Vinto in a second. Got a question, Mr. Dias.
Yes.
You got one, too? Okay.
Um, and I, I went through the, just very quickly, I did go through, um, the line item, like, the actual backup for it. So this is, um, basically like a generic, just for like, um, supplies for students that are homeless, or, or in need of housing.
It is. So we have a supply room at Pace where we have uniforms, shoes, toiletries, anything that a student might need, for basic supplies to start school immediately.
All right, so this wouldn't cover, like, the bus?
Yeah, so there's also a line item on it that's set aside to run the bus for the next year.
Okay, so that could be maybe used for the bus, that could be used for transportation, like, hiring a driver, as we were discussing?
So I'm currently writing another grant where I'm going to have a line item to potentially hire a pot-timer, um, that will just be maybe like a, someone who will just come in to drive the RV when we have an event. So nobody that's going to be, um, at Pace all the time, just as needed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Larrabee?
Hi, Ms. Kudo.
Hi.
Just a quick question. So I as well looked at the back, and it, I, I think it said, uh, other as a $10,000 line item, and $25,000, let me look at it, for-
Yep, so that $10,000 is for the, for the RV, for running the RV.
Okay.
Uh, whatever that might be.
So it also stated in your, um, report here that it was supporting summer programs as well. What, what kind of summer programs is this grant supporting?
So, a variety of ways. So if we have a student who's homeless in the summer, who needs summer school, or who's wanting to go to summer school, we're able to provide the transportation for those students. Again, also, whatever supplies they may need at that time during the summer, we're able to do that.
Okay, I know, I was just wondering, because it said summer programs and, and-
Yep. So we've also, um, we've also paid for students to have memberships at, like, the Boys and Girls Club, um, stuff like that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
You're well done.
Yes, I yield, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Deb, could you call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Contracts, 11-1. We have, um, one facility's contract for Evolve for $31,350.
I'd like to place a hold.
Okay, well, that's the only one we're taking right now, Mr. Dias, so go ahead.
Um, so, just have a few questions on the programs, let me get it up. Um, so I, we've received, at least, even before I was a member, when I was, um, I attended a, like, a student forum, and, and I remember some complaints came up about the Evolve system, about how we're searching, maybe, they're, they're claiming they're be, the students are being maybe searched when they don't have anything to be searched with, like, once the, the, like, when the thing goes off. So I guess my question would be, have we partnered up with legal counsel at all, just to get understanding about what our rights are, and what the students' rights are, or the public's rights are, when we come in, when we're using this Evolve system?
Anybody?
I, I, I don't, I have not been involved in any conversations with attorneys around students' rights, and whether or not we're infringing, infringing upon them by using the Evolve system.
I, I think it's just worth, Pat, some, if we're gonna, um, go to attorneys for anything and everything, then I think that's a worthwhile question, in my opinion. And a specific complaint is cer, and I guess in terms, in terms of policy and how we're using this, when we're setting the system up for when we're having school committee meetings, certain members of the committee, when they set off the alarm, get searched, and certain members of the committee, when they set off the alarm at that same meeting, don't get searched. So I, I, it's just very important that we're just not, that we're very consistent.
It's the grant. Go ahead.
So I just, again, I just think it's very important that we're consistent with policies when we're using this Evolve system, which is what we're discussing today. So I'll vote to support it, but I think there needs to be a tightening around the belt, around the policies, or, again, how we're using this. We shouldn't, um, try and risk infringing on anyone's civil liberties when they're coming in, setting off the alarm, and then getting everything searched. My, my, that's my position.
But you're going to vote for it?
Yes.
Okay. Deb, uh, Mr., Mr. Corey?
I just have a question on the equity, on the equity grant.
We're just doing Evolve first, Tommy.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Aguirre?
Go ahead.
Just a comment on Mr. Dias's comment. I think it's incumbent upon somebody to answer what he just said, because it shouldn't be, you know, they search Mr. Corey, but they don't search me. I mean, there has to be a protocol on it. So for the edification of the public, or for some clarity to the people that work on the security, I don't think they should be doing it, you know, arbitrarily. I've been searched, the guy comes in, looks at my bag, I don't have a problem with it personally, but he shouldn't be doing it to me, let's say, and then not Mr. Corey, and then maybe Ms. Larrabee. So I, I think it's clear that there should be a protocol, right?
If the alarm goes off, they should be searched. That's the protocol. If you set the alarm off, something set the alarm off on your being, on, on whatever you're carrying, sometimes the alarm is just based on depending on what's in the bag, a, a roll of wire, you know, a charging cord wrapped up too tight. It, it creates a mass, and then it's going to set it off because it recognizes a size. That's the way the system works.
Yep, I just, as an aside, today, we just walked in the door because there was nobody there, just, it might be just a staffing issue, and, you know, I'm not suggesting that anything otherwise, just, I, I think it needs to be clear. So if that's what the case is, and it doesn't beep, or it doesn't go off of them, keep on walking. That's fine, as long as it's consistent, that's all. Thank you, I yield.
Ms. Pereira?
I'm sorry, but I just have to, every time I've beeped, I've been searched. What I think we have here is one person telling a story from their point of view. That's not fact. That's, um, she knows your next, he's seen your hand.
I don't think he did.
He did, trust me, he did.
Oh, yeah.
The point is, that's him making a comment that could be true, could be not true, perhaps. That person did get checked, he walked away, didn't see it, I'm not suggesting he's lying, but he's not going to say that, and all of a sudden, it becomes fact. Anytime I've gone through that machine and it's beeped, I've been searched, to the point that I usually don't bring my pocketbook in anymore, because it just takes more time when I'm running late, I just bring stuff in my hand. So to make an accusation about someone who works here, while he's literally sitting out there, is just kind of rude to do in public, when we, when it's not fact. It's just not nice.
You're talking to me?
No. I'm talking in general, I'm looking at everybody.
Okay.
I'm not talking directly to you, you didn't say it. But I'm just saying, the point is, it was said by one person who thinks he saw it. That, to me, isn't fact.
He knows he's calling on you.
That's not fact. Okay? When I come in, I get beeped, I get checked. Now, if, if Mr. Aguirre came in today and there wasn't somebody sitting there, that that should be mentioned. I don't know if it should be mentioned right here in public on a microphone, but it certainly, I would've said something if I walked in and somebody wasn't sitting there, 100%. Because I don't care if the Evolve system checks too many people. I don't care if some kids maybe are a little put out because they gotta look in their pocketbook. Don't bring it to school. You know what I care about? We don't have a gun in our school. That's what I care about. See what just happened not too long ago this year already? Think I care if people are searched? I don't care. And I also, what I do care about is not making accusations that are unfounded. I wanna see it. I want it to be fact, and then we can bring it to attention. Stop calling out people who work here. We wonder why we can't anybody, get anybody to do it. With that, I yield. You can say whatever you want.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, my colleague actually brings up a very valid point, and to, just, just clear the record, that I wasn't, um, this, speaking willy-nilly, I wish to read, um, a report that was made by the HR director relative to selective enforcement. Other individuals, so I'm quoting a, um, specific report made by the HR director. Other, yes, other individuals had their belongings searched, and there was no indication that the security personnel were picking on who they would ask to search. Giving that, given that Mayor Coogan set off the Evolve machine and was not asked to have his belongings searched, I would recommend that the security policies be followed for every individual entering the premises, regardless of security's knowledge of them. I agree with that statement. So it wasn't a speaking willy-nilly, we're speaking from reports. I yield.
I don't know what he's talking about. How did I get roped into that one?
Just 'cause it's not a.
Roll call.
Let's go to roll call. I'm like, I'm like, he's voting for the thing.
Roll call.
Has nothing to do with.
Hold on. I need a motion to second.
Motion to second.
Deb, call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Okay.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next one is Equity.
I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a question. We'll take it as one anyway. So, Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I think this represents, uh, real progress, and, uh, I'm just curious if you could just describe, you know, the nature of this grant and what it's doing for your faculty.
So this is part of our IAG grant at Talbot, and Equity is a firm that works with language, with multilingual learners. And so what this is allowing us to do is provide professional development and opportunities for our students to enhance their English language development skills beyond the, just the ESL classroom. As you know, ESL is 45 minutes a day, and school is about seven hours. So it's really imperative that all teachers are equipped to teach academic language to students in their discipline, because science, people are science people, math people are math people, and the language of each discipline is really complex, especially as we get to the secondary level. So this work allows support through after-school PD. It allows support in professional learning communities, in, um, looking at student work, in looking at student data, in building lessons and talk protocols that will help strengthen academic achievement for Ls across all content areas.
Yeah, Ms. Agarala. So I, I think this represents real progress, because this is bonding together your faculty around cultural competence in order to meet the needs of the students even more so. That's what this is about, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's why it grabbed my attention. That's why I asked my question. Thanks a lot. And by the way, congratulations very much.
Thank you.
I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion a second?
Motion still made.
I have a motion a second. Equity, Deb, please. Oh, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, uh, my only question was just about the grant, and I think it's, uh, not the only grant you get. Is that, I'm reading Mr. Repose's, uh, um, they gave us a copy from what Mr. Repose has sent for it, so obviously I can read it. It's just that, it seems like it's, it's, uh, ill-focused, but this isn't only, you have other things to go on. I think it's just.
Exactly. Yeah, the grant total is just under a million dollars for three years. This is, you know, one small, you know, one component, but there are lots of different pieces of the work.
That was my only question, is that, it's not like we're using only a $40,000 grant for only that specific. You have other.
Exactly. Yep, we had to submit a comprehensive plan to DESI, and that outlines all the work that'll be done.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Yep.
Deb, call the roll, please, on Equity.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have three grants under miscellaneous, CDW.
Hold.
Imagine, Imagine. Do I have any holds on those?
First.
The first one, I have a hold on CDW.
Motion approved. The other two?
I have a motion on Imagine twice. Can I get a second on Imagine?
Second.
I have a motion a second on two Imagins. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
A point of amendment, inquiry. If I may give a suggestion, and I, I've been thinking about this for a while, just to get things up, like, going, moving quicker, something that's non-controversial, like, everyone's most likely gonna vote for it. I recommend just doing a voice vote. All those in favor, aye, no. I think it'll just save the procedural extra 10 seconds. I think it adds up.
I'll do anything to save 10 seconds, Mr. Dias. I agree with you, buddy. Go ahead, Mr. Agia on CDW.
My only question was a financial one. So, looking through the documents, it just seems like this is woefully late before the committee. So I'm looking to see why, if anybody has a good rational reason why.
We were just making sure we were following proper procurement with it, and we brought it forward this month.
That's it?
Yep.
So July 1 is when the piece of paper came out from the director, approved, looks like, by him July 1, and it's September 8. Like, how, how does it take that long to figure out whether we're doing procurement? I mean, there's gotta be more to the story.
No, we were just working out the details to the big purchase. That's all.
So it takes two months and eight days to figure out whether light speed, which we've paid for multiple years, to be, whether it was procured?
Yes.
I, I just, Madam Superintendent, are you aware of this?
I know that we have been, um, working really hard to make sure that we are following procurement, um, processes since, you know, since, you know, ongoing, but certainly, um, more diligently in the last couple of months. I know the piece about Yonder has come up repeatedly. Part of the late ordering had to do with procurement and making sure that we were following, um, expected protocols. We did have the Yonder piece get held up. Because there was a question about the quotes, we pursued Yonder as if it was sole source initially, and it got held up, it got held up in terms of the ordering, because, um, we were informed that it wasn't, and it took a little work to get, um, some of the other quotes in order and to get that passed through. So, um, I, I didn't know the specifics about why this one in particular was held up, but I can see that, um, I, I understand that it seems like a long time. And I, I don't know what, um, what took two months, but based on experiences with other contracts, I, I'm not surprised that this got held up, um, for at least some part of that time.
Yeah, if you could just get us something, but I, I'm looking at page three or four of the thing, and it says Software and Services, CDW Government LLC, with the thing. Isn't that just a, uh?
It's a, it's a state contract.
Right. So how would it, how would it be questioned?
We were, we were looking for better pricing because of the, because of the cost.
So it wasn't a procurement issue?
No. It was.
But it was a procurement issue five minutes ago?
No.
What, I'm just trying to figure out what is.
It's, it's a state contract, Mr. Agia, because of the cost, because it'd be $126,000 we were looking for. If there was anything out there that was cheaper to make this happen. That's all.
So it wasn't a procurement issue?
It's procurement from the standpoint of the price, of how much it is, yes.
Right. So I guess the problem that I'm having is, light-speed systems is a system that actually helps to protect our children. In the classroom, it helps the teachers, and it helps the children make sure that they're not on something that's gonna be a danger to them or others and the like. This is now coming before us on September 8, and school started eight days ago.
I don't believe we've been without it.
We could've. Like, if we're not, if we're not passing this, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be purchasing anything until, they don't know that we're gonna purchase this. So there's gotta be more to the story, and I'd like you to please send us a one-page on it. I yield. Thank you.
Can I get a motion a second on?
Motion still made.
Second.
I got a motion a second on CDW. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Special education contracts are below. Um, I have, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 special education contracts. Any holds on any of them?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Um, I'd like to hold all except South Coast Collaborative.
South Coast Collaborative. Can I get a motion a second on approving South Coast?
Motion approved. With the question.
Second.
I have a motion a second, Mr. Agia.
The only question's financial. Uh, what I would ask is that as we go, and I've asked this before, when we get our next quarterly report, I would ask that all of these numbers are reflected in the salary lines. So when we're taking money from, if we can't find somebody, we take money from the salary line, and we get them maybe when we get them, at some point during the year, but this is now, it, it's contributing to us not having a clue what's happening with the budget. So as these go forward, at the next time we get a report, I'd like the numbers to be reflected. Thank you. I yield.
So that's Southeastern Educational Collaborative. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Let's go back to the top.
Can I ask who seconded that motion?
Who seconded?
Mr. Bailey, uh.
Back to the top. Emerges Healthcare Staffing, Inc. Question?
Yes, is this, um, to fill vacancies, or is this for, or is, or just something we don't, we don't have a position for, but we need the extra support?
So we typically get a lot of our nursing staff, which is what many of these, um, positions are through these agencies, because they require a special skill set. And then, um, South Coast, I know you didn't pull that one, but that one is due to some, uh, FMLA situations. So we have staff, they're just not with us right now.
I, I guess from a budgetary standpoint, because we're looking at over a million dollars between, with all the, um, ESY nursing, is this something that we could save in the long term if we had a position in-house? Have we had positions in-house?
These students are very medically fragile, that require this full-time nursing. Many of them actually get nursing on the way to school in their specialized transportation. So it's not, I don't know how, um, how it would look if we tried to recruit someone with this, um, expertise on our full-time. That would be, I think, a question for our Director of Nursing, 'cause she actually does the hiring through our agencies.
They're not here today?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, I, I guess the point I'm trying to, and I, I understand that, but looking at over a million, almost a million a quarter, just in nurse staffing agencies, if we just had, if we recruit, if we had this in-house, and, because obviously when you go to staffing agencies, I'm gonna like more, we all know that.
Right.
So I'm just trying to understand, that's something that even, we can even add as a goal, is to, um, cut back on the staffing agencies, getting these positions in-house and getting a team in-house, so we're not paying the extra bucks for staffing agencies. I mean, obviously, this is going towards students who need it, so I'll vote to support it today, but I think long-term playing is something that we need to look at. Um, just one question on Solian, um, just looking at the contract, just in the overtime, so this is, this is for one individual getting paid, um, 65 an hour. Their overtime is 97 an hour. That, for the overtime, the 32 and a half, is that for the entire year that we're budgeting for, or is that, I would imagine?
Can you tell me where you're looking, Mr. Dias?
Sure. The Solian contract, I have it up right now and under miscellaneous. I'm looking at overtime, 32 and a half hours is to be approved by you.
I'm sorry, I'm still not finding.
I can read it to you. It says, "One person covering an open position, $65 an hour for 32 and a half hours a week."
Oh, that's, oh, it says OT? That's occupational therapy, not overtime.
Under miscellaneous, it says overtime. Um, it says overtime, 32 and a half hours. That's where I'm getting confused, because overtime's 40. To my understanding.
I don't see that in the Soliant backup. I'm looking, it just says 32 and a half hours, and it's for an SLPA.
Right. I have that up. Um, it's, I don't wanna say the individual's name, but yeah, the bill rate 65 an hour. The assignment date, 6/7/26. Are we looking at the same thing?
I'm looking at the paper backups.
The following contract, the South, Southeastern Mass Educational Collaborative, the, it says OT and CODA coverage. So it's the occupational therapist?
No, it's Solian.
And certified occupational therapist?
Solian Health, LOC, the last one on our.
Yeah, but Soliant, Soliant Health says SLPA coverage for 2025, 2026 is what it says in the description.
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at the backup.
The backup?
Yeah. I, I think I'm looking at the backup too. May I have a reading from?
Mr. Agia?
I think what Mr. Dias is referring to is that if there was overtime, it's at the rate of 97.50. It's on the, it says that, uh, $65 an hour bill rate, overtime bill rate per hour would be 97.50. I think that's a if. I don't necessarily think that's part of the contract.
Right, right. Thank you for that. But under the overtime, right next to the overtime, it says 32 and a half hours. So I don't know if it's contracted that you get the overtime pay after 32 hours. That's, that was my question. It's under.
It, this is just to, just to pay for an SLPA, because we need, we need the coverage.
What you're saying though, Mr. Elmer, is, it says here overtime parentheses, 32 and a half hours plus. So if the person worked 34 hours, they'd be entitled to one and a half hours? And this question is, usually in the industry, you say, over 40 hours. But I don't think that's necessarily universal across all businesses. 32 and a half might be the full-time regular rate, well, a week. And then if you have more than that, it could be a.
Okay, so that's. So that, that's typical? That, that's normal?
It is, because if you think about a, um, it's basically a six-and-a-half-hour workday, which is what our, like, a teaching staff at an elementary school would do, six-and-a-half hours, and that's what that equates to.
Okay.
So six-and-a-half hours of work per day, and then overtime, in the same way that if we were paying one of our staff members to stay after hours for professional development or something like that.
Okay. No, that, that, that makes sense, but I guess, um, so, all right, so they, I guess, after 65 an hour, yeah, the overtime. All right, I yield. I have a motion to approve.
A motion to approve all, Mr., um, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or do you have questions on the other specific ones?
Oh, there you ask them.
Oh, so I have a motion on the other five. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I have two vendor contracts, Citywide Glass and Vincent's Plumbing.
Like to hold both?
Mr. Dias, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so obviously, I know the cost of everything in the past has gone up, but just so I have this understanding. So we're paying for tempered glass for six classrooms, and that's, um, $239,000. What's the reason for the special glass?
So they don't crush the students if they break. So if a student throws something at it, it's tempered glass. So it won't shatter and then fall in, in the classroom. The, the classrooms that, that, that this is specifically talking about is at Bishop Connolly. We have four classrooms that are in the cafeteria. They're freestanding classrooms, movable, so none of this stuff will stay at Bishop Connolly. This will all come with us and to be used, you know, in another location.
The glass?
Or the possibility of using it. The entire classroom moves. It's a classroom made of glass and panels, solid panels. The other two, so it says six, the other, uh, classroom divider was basically taking a, a, a science lab on, when Connolly was the high school. There was a science lab. We removed the equipment inside the science lab and divided that room, two-thirds for a classroom, one-third for a, a pull-out room. So that's making up the six classrooms. The glasses, uh, the walls are about, um, I wanna say 10 foot tall. Um, the top area is glass, and the bottom area is a solid panel. It includes the doors, bracing, but they are freestanding. They're not connected to the building at all.
You think, and obviously, um, you're, like, you're not in the classrooms, but is this something that was requested by?
It's the only way we could.
The director?
It's the only way we could build these classrooms, because the, um, the, um, the diocese did not want anything permanent put there, so that when we move out, um, those areas would still be intact.
Are we using the, we're not using the gym for classrooms?
No.
I think that's something we could use, so we, no?
We, we're using it for indoor recess.
Okay. Um, well, I, I don't know. I'm just looking at it, and obviously, it's a lot of money. And, but obviously, I know we just had discussion about classroom sizes, so I, I appreciate the explanation. I yield. Oh, I had a question. Do you want me to take them together? Vincent's?
Uh, which, which one is yours on, Mr. Dias? Because he's, this one, let, let him finish.
I yield. I just had one question on the, uh, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's, we had, we needed it. I understand that. I just don't see here where it says it's portable or can be taken down, but I'm assuming that in the quote, it doesn't.
So it, it's not connected to the building whatsoever, and it's just disconnected the same way it was put up. The corners would be taken apart, and then we would take it out in panels.
Even though it doesn't say it in here, you're telling us that you know it can be taken down.
Yes, which is why.
By our people, not necessarily them.
Yeah, they are portable.
Thank you. I yield.
Yes.
All right, so why don't we vote on this one?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a motion a second. All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
One, one opposed, one missed, opposed, Mr. Dias. Um, all, uh, vote passes. Vincent's Plumbing, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. Um, I just didn't get to see the, uh, the RPA. Um, so can you just give, um, an explanation? Is there something like with maintenance? What, what happened that we need the?
So this is the culinary, um, piece with, um, Vincent Plum was hired to do the culinary kitchen at RPA. Um, there was a half a dozen items remaining to do, some in the adjacent room, and a couple of, um, issues that we needed to clean up in that room. So that's what this is. This is a full redo, some, uh, some work underneath the, um, the floor in that building, up in the ceiling, making connections in the hallway. Um, it was pretty in, intensive work that needed to be done at, um, RPA to turn what was a home ec class into a, a full culinary kitchen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous on Vincent's Plumbing. Miscellaneous contracts, I'm assuming that's already and.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion a second on both. Any discussion, Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I was gonna, so I don't know who's here for the, I don't see Mr. Cabral here. No one's here for the data mining. Um, could, like, I went through the backup for this, and I didn't really see what, like, what is this for? What are we, what data are we mining?
This, um, Arate is the company with whom we've been working around the cybersecurity event back in the spring, and they, that is the company who is looking through all of our files and identifying for us any, um, individuals whose, um, data may have been compromised, so that we can communicate with them.
Have we started that process of notifying?
No, because we do not have the information yet from the company.
Do we, not, I don't know if you, you probably don't have it now, but is that something you can give a timeline for? Like, a Friday memo, when we're, those individuals will be notified?
Yeah, yeah. I, I can, we can make a request for the information and then share that.
Right, yeah, just, um, like, not the names, but just specifically, like, what the timeline would look like for that. Obviously, we know my thoughts on this. I wish this shouldn't even have happened, but we have to make sure we're protecting the cyber interests of the district. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh, pro AV, was that for both? Mr. Dias on pro AV?
Yeah, this, this one. Yeah, this, this one, this is a question on it.
I was already.
So for the Promethean boards, I mean, this is obviously for preschool. This is, like, I know it's pretty customary. Do we have the Promethean boards throughout the district?
We do, we do, which, which is why they were being added to the classrooms that didn't have them over at Connolly.
Right, I'm, I'm, do we need, like, we need them? Like, it's a need to have the
They are used during the day for instruction.
We don't use, like, anything cheaper?
No.
What was that question?
He said that they're cheaper.
Do we use anything cheaper?
Like, I guess the point I'm trying to make, it's pre-K, I don't know if we need, like, the big Promethean boards, like, I'm just trying to think of ways we can save a little from here and there. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ayil.
Mr. Aguirre.
Just on that issue, when you look at the backup, it talks about the district using Promethean boards as a standard, a standard procedure. So it is important that the youngest of the young get it, so that in K, they're already familiar with it. The boards work well. It's a good teaching device for pre-K through twelve, and they're all over the building, and credit to this committee, spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars on these boards. So I do think it's something that's worthwhile. Thank you.
And I would just add, I mean, there has been a lot of work in the last few years around getting some routines into place, academic routines at the elementary level, using some shared curriculum, you know, early literacy in particular, and some of that work actually does rely on the use of these boards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second on pro AV. For discussion, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre.
May I just make a request on the light speed? If, at some point between now and the end of the meeting, if somebody on either superintendent or the team can let me know with, light speed has been implemented this year. Thank you.
Okay, twelve point one, is discussion and vote to approve membership in the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, as presented by Paul Krugan, that's me. We are, been a member of MASC for a long time. They provide a number of services to school committees. I think we shouldn't leave for eight thousand dollars, including advocacy training, professional development. They helped us with the superintendent's search. They give us legal and governance, information and networking, and I think it's, it's an organization we should stay in. I know they train the new members. I know Mr. Dias is going to be going to.
Saturday.
Get his training done, and he has attended the conference for us. I would advocate strongly we stay in, but hearing anything, Mr. Aguirre.
So basically, last month, I asked for information on this topic relative to how many times they've been back and forth with information to us through whatever. I still have not received that information. I don't know why we, when we ask for information at a meeting and table something, why we don't get the information. Quite honestly, I'm disappointed in MASC. As I said last month, we don't utilize them to the best of their abilities or what they say. The superintendent's search that they assisted us with was a debacle. They did not do a good job with that search. They allowed it to go in ways that it shouldn't have gone. I personally talked to the director of the MASC as the process was going on, and I got to a dead end, because all he wanted to say was, ah, that's what it is, that's what it is. When, when the situation was created illegally, it wasn't utilized the proper protocols to create the committees. The president of this organization was zero support to me as one member of the school committee, and he didn't come clean with anything in writing. So I'm totally not ready to do this until we get the data, so I'll make a motion to table again.
Second.
Can I ask, who is supposed to be collecting the data from MASC?
You or the mayor. The mayor's the one presenting it. So the chair of the committee.
I don't know what you mean by data.
I think last month, I asked for how many times during, throughout the entire year have MASC, have we contacted MASC for any issue, so that we could try to get some data on, are they getting it? We, the superintendent's search is something that we paid extra for. Can you believe that? But we're paying eight or nine thousand dollars for what? I think at some point, we have to push back and say, this is just a waste of eight thousand dollars. I know, Mr. Mayor, you said it's only eight thousand dollars, but it's eight thousand dollars. We shouldn't just give it away for no reason. If there's a person who wants to come before us from the MASC, God bless them, come on up before us and say why we think should be. They send us the advocacy notes once a month, and that's about it. And we're paying eight thousand dollars for it. I think we've got to start looking at every dollar that we spend here. And it, quite honestly, it was, I don't even think we know how much we spent, because we were never told to the school committee how much we were spending on a superintendent's search. So the superintendent's search should have nothing to do with this proposal at all, because that's a totally separate entity.
Well, I, I got to disagree with you about the search being a debacle. I think we got a great superintendent out of it, and I'm not disappointed in what happened at all. I think Dr. Curly is doing a great job, and going forward, I don't mind if we table it again. If you want me to try to find out some more information or bring someone down for the next meeting, that's fine with me. I have a motion and second on tabling. Any discussion further?
Yeah, I just have one. I just disagree with your premise.
I know you do.
No, no.
Yeah, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's tabled. Twelve-two, unanimous, Deb. Discussion and vote, school committee delegate for November's MCAS conference. We don't really have anybody.
Motion to table? I mean, we're not even, we got a motion to table it, right?
I agree with you. We have a motion and a second on tabling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Who made the motion?
I second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr.?
Mathias. And who seconded it?
Bobby.
I second.
Okay.
Hold, Mr. Chairman, I have a question on, on, on twelve-two.
Go ahead.
Point, point of order, the item was tabled.
Yeah, that's a good point. We can't talk about it.
I wasn't, I tried to get it in before it got tabled, but the voice vote, the voice vote tabled it. Before I had a chance to raise my hand.
If somebody could withdraw that table.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Just withdraw.
That's all, I just want to get my question in.
Just want to hear what Mr. Cory has to say.
Let Mr. Cory talk. So we got a motion to reconsider. All in favor?
I make a motion, it gets a second, and then the gentleman, all the gentlemen up here just decide my motion goes away.
No, you passed. He made a motion to reconsider.
That's okay.
Okay, but we see what just happened. Go ahead, continue. Just so we're aware.
Just ask a question, Mr. Cory.
Okay, thank you. So there is some validity to the conference, Mr. Chairman. As far as I know, like, on, on Wednesday's session of the school committee conference in November, that they're going to be talking about, you know, building high-impact partnerships with educational collaboratives. They're going to be building, they're going to have workshops on relations with the superintendents, and they're also going to have conference meetings on the length of meetings. These are all questions that have been raised in our deliberations throughout the past several months on this school board, and I think it's really important that we do send a delegate.
Motion to appoint Tom Cory.
To this conference.
Tommy, do you want to go?
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Perera.
Uh, Mr. Cory, the reason I, I motion to table it is because the item before it, twelve-one, is our membership there. We have, we don't, we don't know if, I, I think it makes sense for us to continue, let me just say, I think it makes sense for us to continue our membership. I think not everything's perfect. I think if the problem is we're not taking advantage, that's what I think the problem is, we're not taking enough advantage as to what's here. Because obviously, we have a colleague who has no problem going on Saturday to get information, because it's beneficial to him, right, and to us as, as a whole, as a committee, right? So it's a good thing he's going. So I agree with you. I think it is beneficial. However, why would I vote to send someone somewhere in November when we could come back and not even be able to send him there anyway, because the committee's decided not to be a member anymore?
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? That's why I tabled it. But I agree, I think when it comes back, we should, I'm voting to approve it, but that's why I, that's why I made a motion to table, which I believe is still on the floor, because I didn't get rid of it.
Okay.
There's a second on Mr. Cory's.
I mean, I think.
I have a motion first to table it.
All right.
Why are we appointing somebody when my motion was placed, a second was made, and I didn't take it off the table?
Second was withdrawn.
It wasn't withdrawn by me. Somebody can withdraw my motion. The second was withdrawn.
The second was withdrawn.
That's fine, then there was an opportunity for someone else to give a second. That's just fine, and you guys all know it.
No, okay.
I have a motion to table it. Do I have a second? If I don't, then that's fine, we'll appoint somebody. But we don't even know if we're going to be a member of this, of this group. I don't know why everybody's rushing to appoint them.
I think, I think we'd have to follow through with your motion in order to.
All right, so make a motion and second.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and second on tabling. If we get back, we'll get you down there, Mr. Cory.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Twelve-three, is discussion and vote to approve the following job description, as presented by Amy Bronhardt, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration.
Thank you. So we have been doing some data analysis around our responsibility to provide homebound tutoring, or what we've always referred to as homebound tutoring, but really doesn't take place in anybody's home. It's just always been called homebound tutoring for students who receive either medical affidavits to be written out of school for any short amount of time or long amount of time, as well as for students who are removed from school on suspension and/or other, you know, very minimally any medical reasons as well. Last year, the district served roughly a hundred and five students in this programming, and as we took a look and analyzed really the service we were providing, we decided and we knew that we could really provide a more robust service. And so in lieu of having tutors out all over the community, it is very hard to track. It is very hard to manage the academic experience we're giving to kids, and we believe that by bringing it to a tutoring center and working with families to really meet the individual needs of their students, we'll be better served to be able to meet those needs and then transition students back into school when they're ready. And so this has always been a contractually stipended position. There was not really a job description, because, but we were meeting our obligations. And so we have put together a job description for a site lead for the tutoring center, as well as a tutoring job description for the tutors. We will look to host this program out of RPA as the alternative placement location here in our city, really trying to diversify the services that we can provide at RPA as well. And so you have before you a site coordinator, site lead position, as well as a tutor position. These positions will be funded based on student enrollment. That will drive the need to bring tutors into these roles, and this is our way of formalizing these roles, so that we can begin to meet our requirement as it relates to providing tutoring services across the city.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cory?
So I'm, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I just want to know a little bit more. The school department's always provided homebound tutoring, so these kids are not going to be in their home, but they would actually go to the site at RPA?
It'll be a blend of virtual, hybrid, online, and in-person at RPA, yes.
So it'll be a blend?
Yep.
And, and is it going to be across subject matters?
Yep.
Across the realm? So social studies would also be included, even though social studies hasn't been so much of an MCAS-sponsored area, you know? They're still going to cover all of that, right?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with MCAS. This is all about supporting students and making academic progress as it relates to the courses that they would be taking if they were fully, if they were attending in person.
And are we talking, we're talking primary level as well as secondary-level students?
Thank you for asking. No, this is going to be targeting grades six to twelve, and as we looked at the data, that was really the bulk of the grade levels that we were serving students in the tutoring. There's always a couple of, you know, anomalies in the lower grades, and it should also be noted that this doesn't mean that the one-on-one tutoring will be completely obsolete. It's really about looking at each individual student's need and what we are able to provide in a tutoring center and working with the families at the same time.
Thank you very much, Ayil.
Shelley.
Hi, Amy. Was Dr. Bronhardt, oh, sorry.
No, Ms. Perera.
Sorry, what was I just, I just got sidetracked. Give me one second. Okay. Sixth to eighth grade, you said they're all going to, this, this is going to be housed in the RPA.
Yes.
Is this a program that's an after-school program? Is it going to be during school?
It is. It'll be after, it'll be evenings. It'll run from four to six in the evenings, which will allow all of our staff across all of the public schools to be eligible to participate and work with our at-risk students in this programming, but also after school hours, so that the school is not, you know, occupied by the students who are there, and really being able to provide and use the resources at RPA for the students who do come in, but also to have a home for the tutoring staff that will be in the program Monday through Thursday.
So I guess my question is, are we going to have RPA High School students with sixth grade students? But you're answering me in a way we're not. Okay. So then, the other question I had, where was this housed before? Where was this work done previously, did you say?
It was really all, we were offering one-on-one student tutoring and.
Where?
All over the community. So whether it was at the library, and oftentimes through virtual teaching experiences.
Okay.
Sometimes students might meet back at a school, depending upon the after-school hours and what really that individual student circumstance was. So we've, we've really been doing this work.
So are these, is this virtual tutoring opportunity still available, or will this take place of that?
It is.
Because my, my thought process is transportation, right, for kids to trans, to get transported to RPA in the evening, if this was done virtually before, or if this was done at their community school before, that was walking distance or easy for mom or dad to get them there. But if we're centralizing where this is happening, I just want to make sure that if there's a transportation issue, there are options for those students to go elsewhere. So that's the question I have.
We'll, we'll work with individual students. Oftentimes, tutoring was not happening at a physical location. Those were really, like, singular situations, and many times since COVID specifically, the virtual world has really been the chosen pathway. So we feel by creating a space, keeping in mind it's also on the Serta bus route, we'd love to continue to just expand opportunities to get students to the site.
How late does the bus run?
That I'm not sure, but I, I do believe past six o'clock, though.
Well, I don't know what the after-school hours are, but the buses.
Well, this program's four to six.
Okay, so it's not too bad. But believe it or not, the buses don't run very late. That's, you know, just, because I, I just know that. So that isn't always an option necessarily. I just want to make sure that we have kids who have transportation issues. We're not causing more transportation issues for parents and trying to get the services they need for their kids by locating it. But if you're telling me you're going to work with parents, if that part of the city is a little too difficult, maybe they're way out in the south, then, mom, you know, whatever. You get what I'm saying?
We will work with individual students.
I want to make sure that that's happening, that's all. Okay, thank you. I think this is great. Thank you for your work, doctor.
Mr. Cory?
Yeah, I just want to have a little follow-up question, Dr. B. Are there going to be any attendance obligations for these students, a certain bar that they have, a standard for them to meet?
They're going to need to check in one to two times weekly at a minimum through a virtual meet link, so that we can get eyes on students, check for wellness, but also ensure that they are making progress academically. And so some of these features are also enhanced features as compared to where we've been, as it relates to being able to monitor and supervise our homebound tutoring programming across the city.
So there will be a standard in place. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias.
Just, just so I have an understanding, so this is going to be open for two hours a day, Monday through Thursday?
For specific students who are enrolled in the homebound tutoring center, yes.
And the two positions you're seeking approval for, or the district's seeking approval for, is this going to be a converted position, or we, so, so you said, correct me if I'm wrong, these are, right now, individuals who are going service out of rank to receiving a stipend for their work in the tutoring?
This is a contractual service, and teachers currently get stipended to do this work, and so we are following the same funding mechanism as we have historically.
Right, so what now, we're looking to create a, two positions to, specifically for this?
So we've all, just to be clear, last year, we serviced over a hundred students in tutoring, and so we had probably roughly fifty to sixty tutors across the district functioning as tutors. So this is going to centralize that experience, so that we can really keep our eyes on and support the tutors. They can work in concert and in strategy with each other as they service our students that are in need of tutoring. But this is not a tutoring center drop-in for students from our schools across the district. This is a required service for students who find themselves eligible for this service based on a number of other circumstances.
Right, but there's never the position of tutor, which is what we're creating today?
No, there has been.
There has been.
There, oh, there has, okay.
You know, she talked about forty, fifty, or whatever, whatever number you use. Like, we have a, a large number of tutors who are providing one-on-one, primarily through Google meets, providing one-on-one tutoring to students four hours per week.
So we're creating a job, this is just.
So this is just a job description for an existing position that hasn't had a job description, that maybe has not been, you know, widely, you know, broadcast in terms of the hiring. It's just people, you know, some people have been tutors forever, they, you know, five years, ten years, whatever it is, they pick up a couple kids to tutor throughout the year.
Okay, but they haven't had a job description before?
No.
Okay, so I guess that my question would be, you, so you would have individuals serving in two positions, basically? I mean, we already do.
Like, it, you really want to think about, like, an after-school program. They're Like, you really want to think about, like, an after-school program. They're not serving in two positions.
Okay.
They're teachers by day, and then we say, hey, we're running this after-school program. Who wants to apply? When we do that, generally, we, we do it with some kind of posting for a 21st century program, or whatever it is, and people apply to the job.
I guess, and correct me if I missed, well, thank you for explaining that. So, where I'm getting confused, looking at the tutor position, like, the draft job description, like, I don't see, like, I, I could be missing it, but like, hours, like, usually those after-scholes are like three to six, and that would be like in the job description? I don't-
I think it says it.
I, I know, I could be missing-
You're right. It might not say it here.
So, I guess that's where the, my confusion was. And for the site coordinator, is that going to be a part-time position as well?
I, I think it's under salary in terms of employment, where we try to just keep it brief, which is contractual rate, and in accordance with FREA and FRAA contracts. And the reason that we didn't put four to six in the job description is because the timing of the program could change, and it could adjust. And so, once these are approved by you, I didn't want to have to come back to the committee to approve a minor adjustment. So, that's why the hours are not specifically listed. But if you notice, the last page of the FRPS Secondary Student Tutoring Center overview, the details that you're asking are listed within there.
Okay. And I'll go back and look at it. But basically, we're not going to have, like, a full-time salary for two hours of work. Okay.
No.
Last question, and I always see these on the, like, the, the job descriptions of everyone that's come before us, and I, I've never, I don't recall receiving, like, communication. It says the superintendent of schools reserves the right to waive a position, qualification. Bless you, whoever's listening. Is that something that happens often, like, we waive a qualification, like, or superintendent? Do you usually waive qualifications for positions, or have you ever?
I, I mean, not that I can recall. I think that generally speaking, what happens is we have requirements for licensure, and there's probably, I think, accompanying language that say, like, licensed, or waived, or, and so, I'm not making an exception in those, in those cases, in terms of the hiring. So, I mean, I have to look more closely, I think, in terms of required qualifications, and what's, I, I don't think anything's been brought to me, in terms of, this person isn't qualified, do you still want to hire them?
Or meets the qualifica, okay. I guess, because I just never, like, I didn't know that's something that happens often, like, person doesn't have, like, they require, they're required to have a master's, and they have a bachelor's, and maybe hypothetically, you're waiving the requirement for them. I think it's, that's supposed to come before the committee. I just really don't recall ever receiving that in general, but I didn't know if something-
Yeah, I don't think that I've ever sent any kind of information like that, but really can't recall. I'm not saying it hasn't, I don't know. I can't really recall, but I can make an inquiry.
Okay. I, I yield for now. Thank you.
Can I get a vote on this? Mr. Agia?
Just a few comments. One is, I think this, something like this should have gone to the alternative subcommittee to flush it out a little. But that's just an aside. It's here before us. One of my concerns is the long-term suspensions. And I, I understand the premise of this. It's basically going to do online. It's not necessarily clear. The profile of the kids on the long-term suspensions, I see the data here, what does that look like? And what do we, are we fooling ourselves to think that there's not going to be any, if somebody's on a long-term suspension, you had 20 in ninth grade, they're in long-term suspension for a reason. And I'm trying to figure out, is this going to affect the school? Then I read through, and it's basically an online edgenuity program. It's not. So, I think that needs to be just clear. This is just online edgenuity, and we're going to have a tutor sitting by themselves.
Well, not necessarily. So, the tutors are going to be managing the work. They're going to be providing support, direct support to kids to be able to complete edgenuity. And for students who we deem safe, we will be able to bring students into the tutoring center. So, that is one of our intentions, as well as, you know, this won't be a one-on-one tutoring center, but it could be a small group tutoring center. That is our intention. But it will certainly give us more oversight and ability to monitor student progress, as well as student attendance, tutor attendance, and to ensure that our kids are getting what they need, as well as our tutors getting what they need, to be able to produce the academic integrity that we're expecting as well, through the tutoring center.
So, knowing about the RPA program in the past, one of the successful components of that, with the dynamics of the class, was an afternoon program at RPA for students in RPA, which I guess this is just going to stop that, because we just were heard that we're not going to have any students from RPA in the building at the time, like, across time?
No, this is going to be from four to six in the basement of RPA, which was the old middle school area, the reassignment of students at RPA. They are, they are now all up on the second and third, or third and fourth floors. And so, there will still be space in the RPA building. As we know, there is plenty of space in that building. But this tutoring center will be off into the basement, into that hallway that's on the left. So, we will be able to separate students as well. And there is an entrance and exit on that side. And so, we will be able to support both groups of students in this alternative site, as we develop and build after-school programs at RPA that currently are not in the most robust place. But that is our goal, as we continue to move forward over there as well.
I, I continue to have concerns about that, having the students in the building. We can say that all we want. I worked there in a high school, when the middle school was downstairs, and the kids interacted outside. We, we create a dangerous situation potentially by having too many things in one building. Personally, I think 90% of this is all going to be online. It should be just advertised as such, and that you don't come into the building. There should still be some options to do other stuff, as you said. But one of the things I, and I think I know the answer to this, we've spent money in the district last year on tutoring. So, when something comes before us, I would like to see how much did we spend in tutoring under the old way, because it's going to be a selling point to why these two positions are going to sort of pay for that, within that line item. You're going to be able to say, this year, we spent $50,000. We're going to have X amount of tutors, and we're going to have X amount. It's just a selling point, I think, financially, that we don't get necessarily. It's not your issue. It's more of a financial one. So, I don't think it's going to cost us any money, but I, I would just want you to please look at the dynamics of having those kids in the building at the same time. Thank you, Ayl.
I, I got one question. Dr. Bronhardt, if a kid's upstairs in RPA, and they had to make up a class or take a test, can they use this after-school?
Not currently. That is not how it's set up. We're working with the RPA staff to develop after-school programming with that team, and those, that team separately. But this would be a completely separate program.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything further?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Well, Bobby's not here, quiet.
Oh, Bobby, Bobby is absent. Okay. 12-4, a vote, a discussion and vote to approve the revised criminal justice job description, as presented by Brian Reposa, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, a second. Question, Mr. Corey?
So, Ms. Reposa, first of all, I'm, I'm really pleased to see this on the agenda. Anytime that we could grow our CTE programming, I'm a big fan of. I think Chapter 74, programs for public schools are incredibly important. They hit our students in a different way. And I think there's a huge success rate involved in that as well. I even wish that we could drive our Chapter 74 programming even further, but I realize there's all kinds of complexities in scheduling involved with that. So, I'll leave it at that. As far as this program on criminal justice, I think it's great. I hope it feeds into maybe grooming not only some kids who may want to be lawyers, but grooming some kids who may want to work in prisons, or grooming some kids who may want to become police officers, or the like. With that being said, as far as the curriculum is concerned, I really think it looks pretty good. I know that they want to inform students about career pathways in law enforcement, the judicial system, corrections, and public safety. One, one of the aspects of the curriculum that I'm really keyed on is, do you know if it's going to touch on humanities and cultural competence?
Yes.
Because in this area, that's going to be a very vital area.
So, part of the feedback that we took last time we brought this forward was really to incorporate, you know, some language that was a bit more broad, and incorporate the humanities. So, you'll see that under the responsibilities, as, you know, listed there in various places, where we want the focus to be on criminal justice and humanities. That way, it's a broader scope, where it could even pertain to social work in some way, or other aspects of public safety. So, the intention here, as I mentioned last time, is to have a program, this is specifically at Morton, that could then potentially feed the program at the high school, the CTE program at the high school, right? So, right now, Talbot has a construction program, CUS has a culinary program, and this would enable Morton to have a program that could be a feeder for Durfee, one of the CTE programs at Durfee as well.
So, so you have three feeder programs feeding into-
That's the intention. We, we wanted to have, you know, some exposure at each middle school in some way, so that we could start to build some interest towards-
When you look at our student demographics, it just makes sense to make this happen. So, personally, I'm, I'm very pleased to see this. With that, I yield.
Anything further?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias?
Quick question. And I know we, I think we might discuss this at the subcommittee, but it's been so long. There's no way of intermingling between, like, the programs, like, if a, like, if a student sat Talbot, they want to go check out the Morton program, the, we can't?
I, I mean, I don't know if we're there yet. I think there's certainly, you know, obviously, if a student, if a parent wanted to choose to send their child to a different school, and there was room in that school, you know, it'd be great to get to a place where we build such interest in the programs, that parents are saying, hey, I really want my child to do, you know, the construction program, so I want to go check Talbot out. It would be great to get to that point. I don't think it's necessarily impossible. But it's not something that, you know, we're, we're doing systematically right now.
Okay. Maybe that's something we can look into. I yield.
Do I have a motion, a second?
We have a motion in a second.
Do I have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Number 12-5 is a discussion and vote to approve the addition of a team chair at Durfee High School?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? 12-6 is second read and vote to approve the principals' salary matrix.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, on the salary matrix. Any questions? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, so, this, we sort of got ourselves into a situation when we approved the FRAA contract, where the salaries for the vice principals are up. So, now, we obviously would have to compensate principals. But I think the range is, is fine, and the superintendent should have some ability to place people within the range. But one thing that I, I don't agree with at the present time is, once you become a principal, I think we need to remove the advanced degree stipends, and that should be incorporated into the value of the person. We could have a person, for instance, that's a first-year principal that has a doctorate, which is fine, and we have another person who's a 10 or 15-year experience principal, that would, their range is different based on a, a CAGS or a doctorate. And we don't require, in order to get a principal license, a CAGS or a doctorate. So, I think we should eliminate those, to have the ranges be wherever they are, and the superintendent fits the people based on where she thinks they should be. I don't think we should be adding the CAGS and the doctorate to that. So, I'd like to make an amendment that we remove the advanced degrees, but approve everything else.
Second.
Mr. Agia?
Just to follow up on that. At the same time, as we've done the same thing when we look at superintendents' contracts, assistant superintendent contracts, and the like, we don't give those positions extra money, I don't believe. And we've been trying to get away from that for a few years, so that it's more like, if you're superintendent, you're superintendent, here's the range. You have a doctorate, great. If you don't have a doctorate, you can still be a good superintendent. So, we do that consistently at the upper levels across the board, and I'd like to keep it consistent.
Is, if you're giving, if you're giving a superintendent the ability to place them on the matrix where she thinks is best, is she allowed to take the doctorate and the CAGS into consideration, when she moves someone along and says, you know, you're going to go up a little more than Coogan, because you have a doctor-
That's up to individual.
Up to her.
What it would do is just, it creates the parameter. So, what we're doing here is the parameter for, is whatever, it's 160,000. This is just adding, so the real parameter should be 162.5, if it's $2,500 for a CAGS, or $4,000 for a doctorate. So, we don't have that authority to appoint people and place them in that matrix. That's the superintendent's role. But by us creating this structure, it's automatic, that they fall within the range, and then, the flip side of it, she could say, okay, I'm going to give you less, and then call it a $4,000 stipend. But typically, what happens is, they would get, okay, him and I are both principals, we get 150,000, and he's got a doctorate, he gets four grand more than me. I've got 15 years' experience as a principal. There's no mechanism for the superintendent to do, this is automatic, is, I guess, my point.
Yeah. I mean, the, the table, the, the, the matrix does account for, for years of experience. But you're right. It's like, one to four, you're in one range, five plus. So, if you're talking about a five-year person, five-year principal with their doctorate, and then you're talking about a 10 or 15-year principal, technically, they could be making the same, and then only one person gets the, the increase for their doctorate. But I would say, like, in general, that, that doesn't happen. I'm happy to streamline this even more. I know, like, you know, you had an opportunity to read through the rationale, really looking to streamline this. But one thing I would just point out is that, you know, I asked for a 10%, I requested a 10% increase, I think it was, in the advanced degree stipends, because there hadn't been any movement on them since 2020 or so, when we first started using the matrix. On, out, you know, for folks who are not at, like, the top step, they are set, or salaries that are unionized, those built-in, the built-in movement on the scales, those actually get increased every year, like, with their, you know, the, the entire salary, including whatever bump that they get for their degree, actually increases. For principals, that has not been the case. So, as, if, if I build in to someone's salary, their, their education, their degrees, then that is going to get the same 5% increase, or whatever it is, we do from year to year. I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to point that out, that usually, the base salary gets the increase, and then we add the stipend. Now, the base salary will include credit for their, for education credit, and then that will get the, you know, the percent increase will be applied to that as well. So, I just want to point that out to folks.
K-8 school?
K-8 schools run in elementary, I gotta look, to be honest with you.
Right here, it's right here, doc.
Oh, where they land?
Yeah.
I think, Kevin, am I correct, that the K-8s have always been in the elementary? They, they, they run in the elementary?
They run in the elementary?
Yep.
So, so, most of them are 500-plus schools for us, anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should have probably listed it there, though. Sorry. Yeah.
That's okay.
That makes sense.
All right. So, I have a motion to-
An amendment.
I have an amendment to, oh, I'm sorry, Shelley, you got a wave, buddy, you're way down the end. Shelley?
Wave, I've been waving, I've been moving.
You gotta yell, yell, let's call him, guys.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, just yell. Ms. Pereira, Ms. Pereira.
So, here's the thing. I, I, I'm just going to say why I'm going to vote no on this, because I do believe that there should be some credit given to education. First of all, hello, we're in a school, we're in the field of education. Second of all, it happens throughout. I get paid, the job I have doesn't necessarily require the degree I have, but I get paid a little more because I have that degree, because education matters. Because just like experience matters, so does education. Somebody gets a doctorate, they just didn't throw money at a school and get a paper. They actually went, took classes, probably wrote a thesis. This is an investment in their life. It is experience. So, I do think we should be taking education into account, especially, because this is literally what we're doing here, is education. So, that's why I'm voting no on this. Now, with that being said, I don't think it's, it's necessarily a direct requirement for hiring somebody. If you have two candidates, and one is, you know, like my colleague said, is 15 years' experience doing the job, another one maybe less, but's got a doctorate, then you look at it and go, okay, this person might be better for the job, even if they don't have the doctorate, or what have you. But I think when we're talking about a pay scale, if you want people who have doctorate degrees and master's degrees to come work here, then I don't think we need to give the impression that we're not paying them for their education, because I just think it's going to be harder to fill. I don't think we need to go back and forth on this. It's going to fall where it may. But I'm just saying, that's why I'm voting no, on, on the amendment, you know?
Okay. But Dr. Curly, wants to answer that, then, Mr. Agia?
Do you want to go? I wasn't sure who raised, so, I would agree with that. And I would say that particularly because sometimes with the salary ranges, anyway, things kind of feel arbitrary to people. And I do think that it is a very solid statement, you know, to be made. I, I could make a statement all day. But I do think it's an important statement to be made, potentially, like, by the committee, in terms of supporting, like, and this is the, the, this is the additional, because of the pursuit of that degree. And so, I do think there's that opportunity there, to place value and emphasis on it. And it, to me, I will say, like, it really has nothing to do with two people side by side, and we're going to pick the person with the doctorate, because we, we value the education. That, that's not really the issue. The issue is, for me, it would be around, like, two people who, you know, the compensation potentially being different. On one hand, we're offering people compensation based on their- compensation based on their experience in the job, and I think that the salary schedule addresses that. And then separately, kind of above and beyond, if you're, if you have this experience and you've pursued these higher degrees, that we acknowledge that as well. And I'll say it again, like, I'm all for streamlining. It, I do think that there's something to be lost here by not keeping those higher degrees separate.
Mr. Agia.
Yeah, so it's a straight, I guess this is just a process of being consistent, and sometimes that's more difficult for some than others. But we, as a committee, have voted at the upper levels of this department to not do this. So I don't understand how somebody can sit here today and say, we're just gonna add for the principals to do this, when every member of this committee voted when we hired the assistant superintendents to not give any extra money from the doctorates and/or the CAGS. And the same thing with the superintendent. When she became superintendent, we all voted for a contract. I might have voted against it, but at the end of the day, she didn't get money for her doctorate added to her thing. So it's a matter of being consistent. We are not consistent on this board with how we spend our money. And we should be looking at it that, okay, so now this is gonna happen. So next month or whenever we negotiate with our three assistant superintendents, they're not gonna get the same rate of pay or the, when they start at the same time that we all voted in our infinite wisdom to keep them the same regardless of the doctorate. Now we're saying, oh, but principals, you get four grand. But assistant superintendent, you get zero. Madam superintendent, you get zero. Like, we're just not being consistent at the upper levels. And I think we need to start to look at the ramifications of contracts and what our job is. The administrators' union negotiated a contract that the majority of members voted for that increased some of these things. Therefore, the range has to be bigger, but that has nothing to do with the fact of a doctorate or a CAGS getting extra money. I think they're two separate issues. The range, you can increase the range. But at the, at the end of the day, the ranges are what you recommended, and they're based on what was before, and they added the 5% as, you know, was recommended. But I don't know how we can sit here and actually take a vote to be inconsistent when we're looking right out and we know that there's cases that we were not consistent with. I just don't see how it's possible. So please, be consistent with your votes.
Right. On Kevin's, on Kevin's amendment to remove the educational stipends from the principal's salary matrix, do I have a motion, a second, Deb?
You do.
I do.
Roll call.
We should do a roll call on this one. Go ahead.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavia?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, on the matrix, do I have a motion, a second?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended. Second, I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
One question.
Oh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
I guess it's a question slash comment. This is the opportunity for us to weigh in on how people get their increases. I'm of the belief, and I've always been of this belief, we've done this for many years, that principals are not in a union. They don't get automatic raises when everyone else does. When you're in a union, 500 members, we get 5%, everybody gets the 5%. What we've always done here is that sometimes a principal might meet their goals, meet their standards, they get more percent, and other people might get less percent. But I think there's a difference of opinion with the superintendent that she believes that everyone should just get automatic raises, no matter what their job performance is, or whether they meet targets or anything else. So I'm gonna vote to approve this, but I would hope that we really look at the fact that it's not automatic. These raises cannot be automatic because sometimes people need a year to, you know, get coaching or whatever else. They're gonna get the same, with the mindset that we just automatically give out raises, they're gonna get the same thing as another person who might have hit it out of the park and done something. So we, as a school committee, have a right to give the range and have the superintendent pick which one it is. In the past, that's how it's worked. Some get zero, some get two, some get five, whatever the range is. Current superintendent disagrees with that, and I just think if we approve this, I ask you to please consider moving around whether some don't get the whole thing and some get others. My last point is on the, this is what was presented to us. The mayor asked a question on the elementaries and middles, on the K-8s. I think we need to get clarity on where that is, but at the end of the day, the elementary school range at two to level two, five-plus years is exactly the same as middle. And I gotta be honest, I think a middle school principal has a lot more on their plate than elementary, so I'm not sure that we should have it be exactly the same. And I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's an old mistake that was just carried forward, that they were the same, or is this a new one that was vetted out? But I think it should, we should kind of look at whether that should be exactly the same or not. I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Dias.
Just, thank you very quickly. I agree with my colleague's statements, and I also respectfully disagree with the superintendent's philosophy on how we give raises. Obviously, they should be earned, not just given as a cost of living adjustment, so I just want to make my statements on the record. I yield.
Okay. Let's, let's call the roll on this, Deb, please.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just wanna make a point to say, I am one of the people up here who believes in a cost of living raise. I think if you're doing your job and you're doing it effective, then every year, everything costs more. And I think the people that work for the school department should be able to feed their families and should be able to provide a roof over their head. So I am one of the people up here in that back room who fights for a raise for everyone, and I feel that if you're not doing a job that deserves a raise, then I question why you're still working here. And I think if you're doing an acceptable job, then we give you a big raise. But I think everybody who's showing up to work in this, in this district should get a cost of living raise. This way they can keep feeding their families, and this way maybe we can have people who want to work here continue to stay working here. So now we can take roll call without you.
Mr. Chair.
You already talked two times. You necessarily have to add. You just have to be the last one to talk every time.
Ms. Pereira, I just wanted to clarify my remarks a little, if I may.
I'd like to vote on this. Mr. Dias, could you make it quick, please?
He has to have the last word.
Yeah, I know.
Can I, can I, may I speak, Ms. Pereira?
Mr. Dias has the floor. Go ahead.
Can you please have some back up? Please.
Go ahead, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. My colleague is right, and obviously, as I've also fought for those raises for the teachers, the educators, and the other unions as well. My concerns are more, and relative to the eshnons, and that's why I just want to clarify that. I yield.
Okay. Call the roll, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. LaRavia?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
No.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12-7. First read and discussion, the draft, subcommittee meeting calendar is presented by Dr. Curly.
Motion to pass through first read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to pass through first read. All in favor?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dias.
I didn't know if Dr. Curly had a presentation first, but I did have some questions.
Okay. You have, go ahead. You have a presentation?
Sure. No, I mean, I'll just, so we, at a previous committee meeting, I was asked, I think there was a motion, a vote or something, that I would create a calendar with quarterly meetings for each of the school committee, subcommittees. And so when we sat down to take a look at it, we first started drafting, you know, kind of throughout the year. And then, you know, it struck me that in January, we will have at least three new members on the committee, and that we, it might make more sense to just get some things on the calendar in this, you know, through December, kind of the first meeting of all of the subcommittees, and then revisit the rest of the calendar moving forward. I guess the thing is, I figure like if someone had Wednesday meetings going on and then, you know, they were scheduled out for the whole year, we have someone new on the committee who says, that's great, but I'm literally never available on a Wednesday, then we would end up having a calendar that had to be revisited to a great extent in January. So I prioritize getting things on the calendar for the fall, basically.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you. And I'll vote to approve this as a first read because I know it will come back as a second read. My position is, I don't believe there is enough meetings specifically on the agenda. I think there should be more specifically for facilities, for policy. I know we're supposed to discuss having an overview of all the policies on the book. I always see one for technology subcommittee. Obviously, we're fairly reliant on technology. Obviously grievance needs to meet as needed. I understand that. Another thing, too, I don't know the answer to this. Yes, I believe so. So in terms of making this, this could very well, if we're gonna also change the schedule and make a schedule, it should align with school committee policy. For example, parent and community outreach subcommittee is supposed to meet twice a month according to the policy, and I'm fine for changing that a little bit, even though I would like to meet as often as we can. Obviously, twice a month, it might be a little bit tough. However, I don't believe we should have a calendar that doesn't go in conjunction with policy, so I suggest the superintendent look at the policy or suggest bringing some changes for it, and I'd be open to doing so. But yeah, I think overall, I think we need to be meeting more and having more meetings. I yield.
Mr. Agia.
I'll stand by what I said at the subcommittee. We don't really need, in my opinion, this, whatever this is of trying to come up with a schedule. At the subcommittee meeting, I made a statement in a motion, was to say we need to have at a minimum quarterly meetings. I don't think that's too much to ask if you're on a committee. And we should have quarterly meetings. If you don't want to have a quarterly meeting, don't run for school committee, don't try to get elected, because you have to have quarterly meetings. If you're on too many committees, you can tell the chairman, please take me off of some. But really, for a minimum of quarterly meetings, I don't understand why we're going through this whole exercise because it, if anybody doesn't want to do quarterly meetings, I don't know why we're here. To my colleague, Mr. Dias, policy is definitely one that we have to adjust because there needs to be reviews of policies more often, and it has to come with a, I guess, a caveat to whoever gets appointed by the mayor to chair it, that that's gonna be one that makes more sense. We have policy meetings where we refer, I don't know, 300 policies or something like that. It's foolish. So we have to do a better system, but making them all equal, I don't think makes sense. But at a minimum of quarterly, why would we not just do quarterly, minimum quarterly meetings and, or minimum four per, per calendar year? If you did two early, that's two of the four. We do it with fire drills in a school, like we do it with anything. I just don't know why we're doing this. I know why we're doing this, because the mayor suggested that we go and, you know, do some kind of schedule or whoever at the, at the subcommittee.
I would be happy if the people, if, if the chairs of each committee just sent to me, to my team, just, I don't know, two dates between now and January. I think that would be fine. It was, I mean, sitting down and saying, when do you think we should meet? Knowing full well that if, like, you know, Brian Raposo and I could make these meetings, we, I could very well be coming here and hearing from the chair. Those dates don't work. I, I mean, I expect that to happen. I'm happy to have someone send us the dates and we can calendar them.
Do you agree, disagree with four meetings a year?
No. I, I mean, I, I thought it was agreed upon that.
I make a motion, we do four meetings a year.
Quarterly.
Four meetings a year, because I think that helps the, when it's busy, you might have two. So I make a motion that we have four.
Agreed to that. I did just want to point out, though, Mr. Dias, that, that the description of the committee does not suggest that the subcommittee for parent and community engagement meet twice a month. It says bimonthly, or, but bimonthly is every two months.
Every other month.
Like, not biweekly, but bimonthly. So once every two months, meeting, and then it does say more if needed, kind of thing. But I think any of the subcommittees could meet more than quarterly if needed, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Pereira?
My only comment was, sometimes I think, I agree with Mr. Agia, we're saying, well, this is this, we need to do this four times, we need to. Scheduling subcommittee meetings this far out, I think, is gonna be a ridiculous show. Okay? Because I don't know who's gonna be sitting up here. I know it's not gonna be me, but I'll tell you what. People have schedules, they have lives to, I'm not saying it was your idea. I know how it started. It started because people kept, you know, we need, we need it, we need it. And so why don't we have them scheduled? So the superintendent was trying to be proactive, I get it. To me, it should be in the hands of the person who is, who's chairing the committee. It should be in her hand. Not every chair is the same. Now, if we're gonna say four times, I'm on policy. I can tell you right now, policy should meet more than four times a year. I can tell you that right now. I'm on a lot, I'm actually on committees who, alternative, probably needs to meet more than four times a year possibly, because they may have curriculum in between that we have to have a meeting and attend, right? I would say, Kevin, alternative, policy, what else? I mean, those are the two that I know are gonna meet more than four times.
The motion was minimum, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, minimum. But some of them, like, like the superintendent, the evaluation one, that's, that's gonna meet once. Uh, grievance, you're gonna meet when there's grievances. So, you know what I mean? I don't know if saying a minimum, what I think, the mayor's responsible, whoever's sitting in that seat's responsible for putting a chair in all those committees. It's the responsibility of that committee to meet appropriate amount of time. If that's not happening, it should be addressed by the mayor or the superintendent to say, hey, what's going on? Why aren't we meeting? And I think this makes more sense to discuss this in January when you have new people up here for another two years, and not now when one, two, three of us definitely ain't gonna be here.
Okay.
Well, somebody changed.
About a motion to table?
I, I think, anyway, I agree with Kevin, though. I agree with what he's saying.
I do, too. I did what I was asked to do.
That's all.
I did it through December.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing that there'll be a new committee. I, I'm not a motion to table.
The superintendent didn't oppose it. When we were at the meeting, it was a cordial meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It wasn't like she's saying no. It wasn't like, everybody was sort of in agreement to say the minimum. So all I'm saying is kind of put into policy what we have. Anybody that's out there that's gonna get elected would know, minimum of quarterly meetings at the subcommittee.
I don't think every subcommittee needs a minimum of quarterly meetings. I think there are some that's gonna have more than four, but I think you have some that are not gonna meet quarterly, and the ones I mentioned were, depending on grievances, I don't know how often that meets. How often do you guys meet? From what I understand, legally, it's a lot.
That's as needed.
As needed.
As needed. How, how many times have you met this year, you guys?
So I amend my motion. So I amend my motion to have policy, grievance, and the evaluation one as needed.
Okay, second. Yes, it does solve it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So the motion is, all subcommittees meet four times with the exception of, a minimum of four times with the exception being grievance and, what was the other one?
Devo.
Evaluation. Grab a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. LaRavia.
Shelley, a second.
Ms. LaRavia.
Sorry. I just think maybe we should consider, add verbiage, that the communication between the chair and the superintendent to select the dates beforehand be some sort of agreement because there could be a reason that the chair wants a subcommittee meeting or is requesting a subcommittee meeting, and the superintendent feels they can wait a month. I think it's a decision of both the superintendent and the chair to make that decision. That's all. I just wanted to make sure.
Can I comment on that?
We had some sort of.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you.
Agreement with that.
Um, my only, my disagreement with that is specifically the superintendent isn't in charge of the school committee. If, again, anyone that wants to run for school committee can run for school committee, get elected, and serve on here, but that is not the superintendent's role, and I think that's just conflicting roles, in my opinion. I yield.
What part, I, I, I don't understand. Do you mean collaborating in terms of the dates?
The dates. The dates only, just dates.
Right, right, but I would.
There, there could be a reason. I mean, I'm not going, if there's a reason for seven, say instructional. Okay? So situations happen in the district all the time where the superintendent would say, we need this, like, right now, you know? But, and there could be a, a meeting scheduled for three weeks down the road, but it moving up. So it's, I think it's just communicating and working collaboratively to pick the dates. I'm not asking for anything crazy, but sometimes the superintendent or an assistant superintendent might need a meeting two weeks before, say, a quarterly date that's already selected. I'm just saying, leave it open. Have, just, I agree with Mr. Agia. Say we need to have quarterly meetings for everybody, everything, except policy and.
No grievance.
Grievance.
The grievance, and just leave it at that. But as long as the dates are approved by the, by the chair and the superintendent. I mean, I think it's practice we're using now.
Let's vote on this. We have a motion, a second. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavia?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Now, there is a motion that Mr. Dias made us to pass through his first read, so we just eliminate that?
Yeah, we, we overrode.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. 12-8 is discussion, vote to approve the request for usage of the Morton Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Anything on that one, Mr. Dias?
Thank you. As quickly as want to go on the record, I think there needs to be a lot of improvement with South Coast Rail, and I'm happy they're coming down here to explain their disservice to the public. I yield.
Thank you, Mr.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
Serious question. Based on the, what we had before, when we have them come in from the public, they're not going through the machines, right? not going through the machines, right?
It's Morton. Are the machines on at Morton?
No, I'm just saying, if we did, if we have an outside agency, it just made my mind go to the machines. So if somebody used this auditorium for a community thing, they go through the machines as well, so they're required to pay for the security that's necessary to.
They pay for, they pay for security for the events here, right, Kenny? And the machines are on, yeah? The football, the basketball games.
That's what I'm saying, but they're, as people, if somebody uses this auditorium to put 1,000 people in.
Yeah.
For an event, is it automatic that they, when they rent it, they go through the machines?
Yes.
And then they pay whatever requisite fee it is? Thank you, are you?
Okay, I have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Twelve six. District Public Relations Plan.
We're in twelve nine.
I'm so sorry, I'm reading it upside down, because discussion, thank you, Dr. Perera. District Public Relations Plan is referred by the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee presented by Colin Dias.
Thank you, and I went back to read the minutes that were attached to this item, and with that being said, since this is an item that came from Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee, and it was just really to forward the discussion to the entire committee, I will say this, since I've, and the conversation was around, someone correct me if I'm wrong by missing anything, but PR firms and the use of, like, PR, like, firms, outside firms, and what we do when we communicate with the public. And I received a lot of feedback from the public, and I agree with them that using an outside PR firm is a waste of money, that's my statement. I believe we need a structured plan, and we need to be able to communicate, this is my own statement, we need to communicate with the public, I think we need to wean off the PR firms, and have open communication and collaboration. My position is, we should turn, for one, turn back on the Facebook comments and the X comments. But again, we should have, we should be able to have open collaboration, if a parent has a concern, they can bring it forward, and it can be properly channeled. When we bring in, when we receive a lot of news, I guess my question I would like to ask is, have we started, like, how do we, and I asked this at the subcommittee, do we notify, when we have news, we send out news releases, are we doing that? To, we have, like, some positive news or information we need to share, how are we sharing that? I know we had some conversations around news organizations, just get it from the Facebook page. I think it's also important that we go out there and share what we're doing. That's my position. I encourage my colleagues who were at the meeting to add their comments as well, and I would just like to see some more structure with how we engage the public. Are you?
Bobby?
Bobby?
Yeah.
Not Mr. Bailey, I'm sorry.
And I'm agreeing with Mr. Dias, some of the things we talked about is dissemination of information, how are we doing it, how we can be consistent and do that internally. Pretty much, I'm in agreeance with him in not using an outside PR firm, and how would that look if we had someone that was strictly doing public relations in the district? I think one of the biggest things, and something that we all discuss, is what platform or what central location do we have that we can drive parents, students, teachers, no matter who it is, to, for information? What does that look like? When we talk about our image in the district, how do we make sure we're overly informing parents, faculty, staff, whoever it may be? And then how do we control our narrative to make sure that we're putting out correct information, no matter what it is, and, you know, just letting people know and staying up to date on some of the things we're doing? From my understanding, we do have someone here who does social media. One thing I did express is, doing social media and public relation are two different things, that's two different entities, it's a lot of work. So some of the discussions that we did have was figuring out the best way to really get in front of some of the things that we have, because, I mean, since I've been on this committee, I think we've had incidents that have happened, I think there's misunderstanding. I think we're in a world now, right now, where it doesn't matter if it's true or not, it matters who posted first. So it's really getting in front of some of these issues that we have, and, you know, painting some of the positive things we do as well, because I think the district does do some positive things, and I think sometimes it can be overshadowed. But with that, are you?
Anybody else? Mr. Agia?
So I think that we, I think we talked about a new job description for our person, which would eliminate the need for the extension of the PR firm, so I'd like to make a motion that we do not renew the PR firm contract for $27,000.
Second.
When is the contract up?
We've been told multiple things, but I recall October?
Yes.
But typically, what happens is, we say that if we don't take a vote, and I'm not saying this to the current superintendent, what happened in the past was, we were told, oh, it's only a one-year contract, and we didn't know, and then we asked the new superintendent, she looks it up, oh, by the way, we signed the contract for multiple years. So the reason why I'm asking for the vote is to give her direction, to say we're not going to renew that contract in October. I believe that the district has already said, based on us giving a raise to the other person, that the money was going to come from the, you know, not filling that, but I want the committee to be on record as a vote. Are you?
I just want to say that this is coming up right now, as far as, you know, not renewing their contract, it wasn't necessarily on the agenda, so I'm not prepared to vote on that right now, I'm not saying I disagree, I'm just saying I'm not prepared. So I'm either going to abstain if this vote goes forward, or we can wait, and maybe the superintendent can promise us she's not going to renew the contract until the October meeting, when I and others can maybe look into whether we think it's important to keep an outside PR firm or not. I possibly would agree with all my colleagues, they all seem to be in agreement with each other, but sometimes, as we know, I'm the, sometimes I'm the only one that doesn't agree. So I kind of do want to look into it before I make a vote. With that being said, if you guys want to vote, that's fine, I'll just abstain tonight.
Okay, hold on, okay. Mr. Corey?
And so, as far, in regard to this question, if I could ask my colleague, Mr. Bailey, because I think he's the resident expert in PR and relations, what might you suggest of somebody internally to drive this forward, as far as our PR is concerned?
So, from my understanding, I thought this was a discussion, just to move things a little bit further. For me, when I think of our district from a PR standpoint, I also think it's important to have someone internally, just because how fast news travels, for one, for two, someone who's actually familiar. But three, one thing I did bring up is, when it comes to the superintendent, in my opinion, I don't think it's her job to have to, at the drop of a dime, make PR decisions either. That's not fair. And I think if we have an expert on site for what we're spending, and, you know, like I said, it's also working with her, trying to try to see what that looks like, I think we really need to take a look at this, because for what we're getting, for what we're spending, everyone on this stage knows, I don't really think we're getting the best bang for our buck. So it's, like I said, it's really looking at that and what it looks like, and sitting down with the superintendent and see where her expectations are. I don't want to make decisions for her, but I do think it's important that we do go internally, if we're paying the money, especially just to help her and to help this district.
So, Mr. Bailey, as far as having somebody like that, would there be a set, a set job description? I'm worried about distortion, I'm worried about how news gets reported, because it seems like social media distorts, you know, a lot of the things that are happening within the system.
No.
That's my concern. So, how might we be able to control this, where whatever the PR is, you know, going forward, it paints a constructive picture on what's going on in our system?
Well, that's, that's when I get back to controlling our own narrative, and putting things out, and offlineing at the meetings. Some of the things that I even talked about is the superintendent, how she does the WSAR interviews, you know, things of that nature. When you look at the bandwidth of WSAR, not everyone has the opportunity to go back and watch those meetings, and I was very candid with her when I told her, I've never seen one, because I'm at work during that time, right? So people can only go by clickbait or whatever they hear during her meetings, kind of like our own meetings. But when we look at our current contract, I really, since I've been on this committee, I really haven't, like I said, seen the best bang for our buck when it comes to it. So if we did go internally, I don't know what that would look like, that's why I said, I think it's, it's a bigger discussion that we have collectively as a committee. I know Mr. Dias had a great, a bunch of great ideas, and you did as well, but like I said, it's really looking at the job description and what we're looking for, and what that looks like, and the impact.
Superintendent?
Yeah, I did just want to mention, and I know Ms. Perera had to step away, but I did just want to mention that a vote like this one, which may or may not be necessary, there's not an opportunity to have it at the next meeting, because we will have to make a decision on the contract before the October 20th meeting. So if it did get pushed off, it would be for naught, because we have to cancel our contract prior to that meeting.
Okay, so I think we're going to do that. Mr. Agia, do you want to just take a vote on your?
On that exact point, the, I've asked, I don't know, for years, that when votes are coming up to renew contracts, I used to talk about board docs all the time with this, we need to get the information a month or two ahead of time, so that we don't get to the situation the superintendent just said is, oh, if we don't vote not for it, then she's kind of going on a limb, do you vote for it? If you just, like, didn't pay attention to it, and it just automatically, a lot of times contracts automatically get renewed for a year? And then we're like, oh, we should have known that, and it's only, oh, it's only 27 grand. So I appreciate you saying that, because that's what we need every, like, financial team, before anything happens, need to bring it two months before. What do we want to do? This particular place, this is one last point, when I was asking about a year or two ago, before you became superintendent, what are we paying this company for? After either a Freedom of Information Act request, or some kind of, a bunch of emails, we got that, they helped us with Maria Ponce's retirement press release, and we were paying this company $27,000, and that's all we got. I'm not saying you did that, this was prior to you. So at the end of the day, I think it was a misguided vote a couple of years ago, it was meant for when a crisis happens, or things like that, which, if something like that happened, I think we should have the superintendent have contractual flexibility to say, we need to bring somebody in. This is just a straight-out $27,000 waste of money, in my opinion.
So I do want to just.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just want to be really clear, so our contract with them was around doing press releases multiple per month, plus that emergency-type communication. I do believe that at that time, we were 100% under utilizing the particular PR firm with whom we're working, and, but they did actually come here as well. It wasn't just, you know, an email where we said, oh, we use them for a singular press release. The folks from JGPR came out as well to talk to the committee about what services they were providing at that time, and continue to provide, so just wanted to say that.
Okay, Mr. Agia's motion to eliminate the contract with JGPR.
Second.
I have a motion.
I second it.
I have a motion in a second, and that one, Debbie should call it all, but.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRavi?
Yes.
Ms. Perera?
Stay.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Twelve ten.
We just had, we had a second part of this as well, I know I made the motion just quickly, one more part, just to discuss this, that my colleague, Mr. Bailey, brought up, is around using social media as well, like, personally, speaking for myself, we have the WSAR show, I actually went back recently to watch the last three clips, the last three shows, and I believe one or two of them were repeats, believe if we have a donor that's paying for a show for us, I believe that should be utilized more, and I know we were in summer as well, so that might play a role, however, believe, one, if we, donors are paying for a show, that should be utilized. Two, I'd like to see either superintendent or district staff engage with other media outlets, forever a reporter, we have many different local media outlets within the city that reach a wide range of people, individuals, so it's important, and speaking for myself, that we are engaging with the community as much as we can. I don't know if I'm missing anything, Mr. Bailey, if you'd like to add, but that's my position. Are you?
Okay. Twelve ten. Is discussion vote to refer a recommendation from the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee to the whole body, that the Policy Subcommittee review the policies around parental notification in regards to any allegation made of any harassment, bullying, sexual harassment, threats, or anything that constitutes criminality from employee to student, or employee to employee, as referred by the Parent and Community Outreach.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's a referral to the Policy Subcommittee. Most of you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Can I ask what this is?
It's a referral to the Policy Subcommittee to refer policies.
Referral to the Policy Subcommittee, okay.
The Parent and Community Engagement.
Sending it to Policy to look at those policies, that'll come back. For your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations.
Was there, are we doing a roll call, or was that unanimous vote?
That was unanimous. No retirements, I'm sorry. Resignations.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Take it.
I have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, where are we now? Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
Mr. Chair, new business?
New business, go ahead, Mr. Dias.
Thank you. An item came up, I believe it was Friday night, within 48 hours of the open meeting law hours to the meeting, come to my attention in a batch that I received, that we have multiple invoices that are being paid, being paid late, that passed the due date. I counted 12 in my batch alone, which I sent to the superintendent and the team via email. Just wondering if we can figure out how much that will be in late fees, if we can figure that out and present that to the committee. Are you?
You can do that, Mr. Almeida.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Agia.
On that same note, I saw Mr. Dias's email, and another thing that bothered me was, I don't know, four or five months ago, Mr. Dias was criticized by the administration for asking questions on the batches of signatures that we are supposed to sign. Then it came out that, well, Mr. Dias, you were costing the district $800 in the late fee from the superintendent. So then that led to me and Mr. Dias to both ask for, how many late fees are we paying across the district? One of the things that came out was that we paid last year, which is the only information that we received on late fees, was $13,000 to National Grid. I made a statement to the committee and everybody else that said, that's ridiculous, I don't know how this is even possible. To date, still haven't received a response. We need a response to how did we, what is going on in the system where we didn't, where we were late that many times for our National Grid bills? That's one request. The second one is forensics. I've asked multiple times, including having to contact the DocuSign people myself, to figure out, can't we just figure out how long it takes when somebody looks at a batch of 100 pages, and when they sign off on it? To this date, I still haven't received that information from anyone, and multiple members of the superintendent and the administration have received this. So I'm asking for those two things to be provided to the committee. One is, why are we spending $15,000? What other late fees are there, and we need the forensic report. Are you?
Okay, anything, Mr. Dias?
Just very quickly on that, I still haven't seen the proof that there was ever even an $800 late charge either.
Okay. I'd like to respond. I'd like to respond.
Dr. Curley, there we go.
So what you're referencing are the, we did have an issue that started months ago, where Mr. Dias was kind of holding up bill schedules for weeks on end, making requests requests for information, either about the bill schedule itself, or in some cases, not refusing to sign off on bills, because there was some other outstanding question that I had not answered, that was unrelated to the bills. I was asking for the bills to be, you know, for him to sign off, and, you know, we, we had multiple communications about it. Mr. Dias maintained that he had fiscal responsibilities. I maintain that once a service has been rendered, we're not in a position to not pay people. We enter into contracts with people, they come and deliver services, they come and deliver materials, multiple people sign off in the district, saying, yes, we received those books, yes, we received those cameras, yes, the person delivered the PD, and then we have to sign them. We ran into one particular issue with a vendor who was charging us an $800 late fee. That was something that came to my attention during this discussion, you know, over the summer, and I pointed out that we had an $800 late fee, because that particular bill schedule was not paid on time for this one vendor. I've also said since then that the person waived the fee. So I'm, I'm not even sure, I mean, it's being thrown out there, that we're looking for proof. I will, I guess, send the emails, I will, I will forward to you. I don't like the implication that I wasn't telling the truth. I'm not that person. Plenty of things happen that I can report truthfully, I do not have to make things up. We were being assessed an $800 late fee. Mrs. Obenschein threw multiple communications with the vendor, basically explaining the difficulty sometimes in getting bills paid, being a school system, and on and on, got that vendor to waive the fee. And that's where we are. We have since produced the bills, and all of the late fees for National Grid. I explained in the email that just tracking down that piece of it was cost, it cost four hours, basically, just to put together that list, and that if we were to do that with all of the bills, just to kind of vet all of them, we don't, we, to this date, we don't have a mechanism. If the suggestion is that moving forward, we track all late fees separately, and that that is what, something that gets reported out in our quarterly meetings, I'll be happy to do that. But this kind of retroactive, looking back at two years' worth of bills across all of our vendors to track down the late fees is a huge ask, and I'm asking you to withdraw the request and allow us to develop a system moving forward.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias.
If I can briefly respond, it's not more of believing, misbelieving. If you make the accusation, Superintendent, I believe you should have provided the proof today, you made the accusation, that's my position on that. But again, even, I'm happy it was waived, however, is a valid question to ask, that we have at least, and I'm sure there's a lot more, but we have at least $12,000 in late fees from one company. We, as a school committee, should know, in our fiscal responsibility to this district, if there are any more late fees, and what that amount is, and how we can address it. I think that's a no-brainer. If you want to develop some sort of system, I'm supportive of that. However, just for the sake of financial prudence, it's important that we know what charges we're being charged, when it can even possibly be unnecessary charges. We don't know what the issue is for late fees. It could be a variety of reasons. However, for an accountability sub, aspect, that should be known, that should be reported out to the committee, and that's my position. I yield.
Mr. Jim.
Mr. Agia.
Just a couple of things. So the $800 late fee that came from a person, I'm still upset on the fact that she even had the audacity to, to ask for that, when we paid her over $200,000 in the contract. That's, that's unbelievable, that that was even asked for. So I would like to proof of it, to see what she asked for, how she asked for the late fee, because we're paying somebody $200,000, and yes, the city pays late, I said that in my email, but it's not Mr. Dias's fault that we pay late, there's other issues that we pay late on everything. And I'm sorry that if Mr. Almeida or somebody in his fiscal department that has a budget of over $500,000 or $600,000, that, and internal fiscal control, like, we shouldn't be paying $13,000 in late fees to National Grid is such a burden on his department or to you, Superintendent. But nobody in their right mind can say that that's a valid question. Who on this committee actually thinks that it's okay that we spent $13,000 on a late fee? I don't know anybody that says this is, and I asked for how it happened, got no information, which just tells me that it just happened, and that's okay. It's just 13 grand, just 13 grand, just like the $8,000 there, $6,000 here. At some point, enough's enough, but I'm upset with the $800 late fee, and I would ask for the information of how the person asked for that, because, quite honestly, I think it's unacceptable to even ask that. With that, I yield.
We did sign a contract with the individual, saying that we would pay late fees.
Yep. And if I would have known that, I probably wouldn't have voted for the contract for $250,000.
Okay. All right, so, do we have a motion here?
No.
No, okay. Do we have a reason to go into executive session?
I believe we do.
Yes, there is a need.
Mr. Suicide.
Okay, I'll listen. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2187, to review and approve executive session minutes for August 18th, 2025 regular school committee meeting. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2181, to discuss complaints brought against school committee members. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2181, to discuss complaints brought against an employee of the school department. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation with regard to the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, complaint, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the committee. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forwarded Administrators Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the forward school system, represented by the Forwarded Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining agreement, including hearing agreements, as relative to all parent professionals, employees of the forward school system, represented by the Forwarded Federation of Parent Professionals, the chair has determined, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. We would reconvene that may or may not be statements at that time.
Motion to-
Mr. Agia.
Just, before we go into executive session, I think there was an issue that Mr. Dias had emailed about to get something on the agenda, and I believe Ms. Cabral said that the mayor would be addressing the issue tonight, and I don't know that that was brought up. Do you recall what I was referring to?
Do I?
That is yours.
No.
Mr. Dias asked that at some item, I believe it was-
It's not on the agenda, it's not here, what are we talking about?
You want to unmute, or do you want to address it?
What is it?
I've got the emails.
I believe it was the issue that I raised for several months about, an investigation that I asked for, that no one thinks that we should do.
I can address that in executive session.
But is that the issue that we were talking about?
That's what I figured it, yeah.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the agenda, and I didn't see where it was going to fit in.
Yeah, I have something for that, I didn't know what you were talking about.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dias.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session and waive the 10:30 deadline.
Do I have a second? Hearing no second. Where we're going, I make-
The motion to enter into executive session.
Session.
Second.
Do I have a second?
We get a second.
I have a motion to second executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
We should take a roll call on that, Mr.-
Okay, go ahead, Deb, call, take a roll call on executive session, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRiva?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We're back in, we're back from executive session, Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dias?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. LaRiva?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Anything further to come before the committee?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for August 18th of the regular school committee meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second. It's a question. It's a, it's a comment. We obviously always, it's always been customary, we come out, we approve these minutes, which is fine, but again, approving the minutes, I just want the public to be aware, that doesn't automatically mean full disclosure of the minutes. And the school committee never sees the individual redactions, or we can challenge them, and going forward, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, so I-
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. LaRiva?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, anything further?
Kevin.
Mr. Agia?